Okay, well, I think we're here we are at our retreat. Very exciting. As I mentioned yesterday, we it's an opportunity for us to dive into deeper into various topics and answer questions and think strategically about the year. So with that, I think Executive Director Ross, or do I need to say the time? Is it 9:07? And then will you call the order or call the roll call? I'm off today.
You're totally fine. President Haley.
Right.
Vice President Hagerman?
Here.
Superintendent Horn?
Here.
Member Katniss? Dr. Clay?
Here.
Or not yet. Dr. Cruz Rivera? Dr. Hightower?
Here.
Member Kevikis? Dr. Webke?
Here.
President Haley, you have a quorum?
Fantastic. With that, Executive Director Ross, I would love for you to just give you or have you give us a brief overview of today's retreat.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, thank you so much for being here today after a dark and stormy night. It was pretty intense weather last night. Very much appreciate you being here bright and shiny. As my students used to remind me, two days in a row of me is a lot. So thankful for your presence. Today's retreat is an exciting one. We are going to dive deeply into some topics that have defined the previous year and will set us up for some success in the year to come. We will open the retreat with a couple of bits of board business. At every retreat, the board is required to approve the agency's budget for the year, which we then take to the governor's office. The board is going to vote on potentially changing its policy for calls to the public. And then we will have three presentations, and we are so thankful to those who have joined us today to present. One from our professional practices advisory committee. We'll have a presentation on school finance from ADE and some great folks from ASBO, and then a presentation and discussion on open meeting law from our Assistant Attorney General, and then best part lunch after. So quick overview.
Well, with that, let's go to item two. And Executive Director Ross, this is, I think, the presentation of the FY '27 budget.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. As I said, the the board is required to approve the agency budget prior to its submission. All government agency budgets in Arizona are due to the governor's office by September 1st. So it's always an interesting little time thing. We were able to finish the budget budget package. Actually, we were the first agency earlier in the month. Our budget analyst was actually deployed. He's a reserve. And so we had a little bit of delay in getting it back understandably. But you've got the budget package. The thing I want to highlight is we, for the first time in a number of years, are putting in requests for additional funding. So I want to just explain those to you all. The first request is one-time funding $500,000 to support the case management system for our educator discipline side of the House. The we currently use a system to manage all cases, all case notes, all case files. Our system needs to speak to ADE's certification system because everything that the board does in the ed discipline space is resolved in action or no action against a teacher's certification. And then we also need to have ability for our Assistant Attorney Generals to access that system. So it's sort of a three-pronged piece. We are currently using a version that is no longer supported. And we've been kind of eking along on that version for about a year, two years now, and are just coming to a point where we have to either significantly upgrade or make a new choice in vendor. So that's one of the pieces of funding. The second piece is also related to educator discipline, largely, though other elements as well. We're requesting ongoing funding of $200,000 for increased support from the Attorney General's Office. As you all know, and you'll get a little reinforcement today in the first session, the Attorney General's Office provides staff for the board to process all educator discipline cases. We currently have an inter-agency agreement with them for 3.5 FTEs, three attorneys and a half paralegal. Two of those attorneys, we lovingly refer to them as baby attorneys because they're right out of college. They look like they're right out of high school. They're right out of college. They work solely on P-PAC. And then Joe Cada, who is our AAG, who sits next to me during board meetings, handles agency business. The Attorney General's Office has expressed to us a need to increase the funding in that agreement to stay competitive with salaries and and cost of living. And then also because of the number of cases processed by the incredible investigative unit enforcement action team at the board, we need a bit more support. So we've got a funding request there. And then a last funding request of $221,000 ongoing for staff, for salaries, and to I mean, we have the best team in the business. And in order to maintain that team and keep them here and happy, we want to make sure we're rewarding them for their good work. So that's it's not something you guys have seen in my tenure as Executive Director. I think the last time the board made a budget ask was the year before.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, I arrived. So so this is the first time in a few years. Outside of that, the budget's the same as it is each year. All of our funding comes from the general fund. And as I promised to Dr. Hagerman this morning, if we can recoup a little bit of the funding loss from the last couple of years, we will try to travel for next year's retreat, and we will go south. Any questions?
I just I had a brief question about the the system that you would use for the P-PAC and the investigative unit and having all the different players. Will it just be $500,000 to build a whole new system? Or is it to add some new Band-Aids and tape and piping?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Great question. There's a couple of different routes. I think depending on the funding available, if it were to come through, decisions would have to be made. We're currently using a company, again, as Sean mentioned, we're on an older version. So there could be an upgrade that would be required there, as well as some development in the getting the weeds, the API to talk to the agency. Or there it would probably be worth exploring vendors that are currently out in the field. And it's actually a full-blown case management system. So it's it's it manages all the way from the report of misconduct, building the file, moving through the investigative unit, moving up to enforcement actions, looping in the Attorney General's Office, all the way through the end. And then it also holds those files. So, for instance, if an educator, if it was a turn down, we weren't taking action at this time, the file is still there. So it's it's a robust system, but it also has to talk to ADE. And all the educators come from ADE, and they communicate with each other because we also process like applications, you know. So the short answer is, I think that depending on the level of funding, we would explore our best options for the most efficient and most cost-effective way to do that whole case management system.
I need Dr. Hagerman.
So the current system, is the current system still talking with each other? Or is it kind of at a stopping point, and we needed something new to get that communication going between all the agencies again?
With ADE upgrading their system, that system was from 2000, and they just launched a mainstream technology system. The API had to be modified. But I would say that since I was involved in that over there before I came over here, that that's kind of a Band-Aid. There's been lots of issues this this last year with any new system adoption on their side. There would be, but it's this constant sinking back and forth that is needs to be addressed, as well as the underlying case management system is a little old now. And the company that currently runs that, it's it's becoming an unsupported version. They want us to upgrade.
No.
Totally for the best.
Only only last question I have is that the amount of money you're requesting, how did you come up with that number? Like, what's the basis of that number?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Dr. Hagerman, members of the board. So we we did a little bit of calculus estimating the cost if we decided to stay with the current vendor to a full upgrade to a fully supported system, including changes in hardware, training for staff. And then also looking at what it would cost to and these are just generalities. We're not committing to anything with the vendor. What it would cost to work with the current vendor ADE is using for their certification system to build out a new system for the board, which is something they do nationally for other states. And so developing to sort of our unique needs, tailoring that system. So using kind of both of those, we wanted both those options on the table. This was where we landed for one-time funding.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Hightower?
Thank you so much. I'm so glad that there's different ideas in case the funds don't get appropriated or allocated. It's such a needed request. My question for the Attorney General's legal counsel support, does the state board also have the option to seek other providers for legal counsel? Or do we have to stay with the Attorney General's Office in case the money does not get appropriated?
So President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, Dr. Hightower, currently in statute, because we are a state agency, we are the Attorney General provides our legal services. That can be severed in statute if an agency so chooses. That's not a path that we've chosen. But the money we're requesting will go much further with the Attorney General's Office than it would with a private firm. Yeah.
Any other questions for members of the board? I did have a brief question on the for the empowerment scholarship appeals. It says two full-time equivalents. Is that obviously, we know Kat and our team. Is there another individual that serves in that capacity?
Yes, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Lucinda Flores from our team, who actually was out monitoring the desk today because Sandy, well, monitoring the desk today, is a full-time employee who works on ESA appeals with Kat.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Any other questions? Awesome. Well, I think for that, we now move on to a potential board or vote on it. Yeah. Okay. So with that, do I have a motion that the board approve the proposed budget as provided and direct the Executive Director to submit the request to the governor's office by September 1, 2025?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. So with that, we're going to move on to item three, presentation discussion of possible action to update the board's format for calls to the public.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Through several discussions with board members over the past couple of years, actually, there has been discussion of examining the board's current policy for calls to the public. And so in working with board leadership, we are putting forward a proposal for you all to consider and vote upon. Just as a quick reminder, currently, the policy, we have four calls to the public, two on the policy side, two on the ed discipline side. There's no time limit in total for calls to the public. Each speaker gets two minutes, and then they register online for that call. What is being proposed is to change the number from four to two, one for policy, one for ed discipline. The rationale behind that is honestly to help with confusion from folks who register for call to the public. When there are four calls, the there are two, there's one sort of for items not on the agenda, and then one for items on the agenda. And then in the ed discipline, it's split up by sort of voluntary surrenders and then P-PAC decisions. And that has just sort of created some confusion in the field. Not and with folks for call to the public, we get a lot of messages from folks like, oh, I don't think I signed up for the right one. And there's a lot of time from our staff kind of devoted to getting people to the right call. So it seems to make more sense to do one policy, one ed discipline. It's pretty clear then where a person would register. And then a one-hour time limit for each call. And that came from a desire to just increase efficiency of board meetings while still providing a robust amount of time for feedback from the public, and then also allowing for a bit more predictability in the length of board meetings, not only for board members, especially those who have to travel quite a distance, but also for those who present at the board, trying to be able to give them sort of a better estimate of when they will be presenting and how long the meeting will last. So you have both in the item and then in front of you and on screen, the the current practice and then the practice being called for. So that's it's the board can discuss and potentially vote.
Does anyone have any questions about this proposed change or comment? Dr. Clay?
Could you explain to me also, there are others that are doing this, other organizations and boards that are also doing this, that's within the state of Arizona. Could you explain what they're doing, please?
Absolutely. President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Dr. Clay, members of the board. There are actually kind of a variety of of calls to the formats for calls to the public across the state. Just as a reminder, in statute, the public body controls the time, manner, and place of a call to the public. So they they really do have control over what it looks like. As a reminder as well, the board does allow for written comments. So we have that avenue. But where you see a couple of different models, I know Superintendent Horn has mentioned this, there's a at the legislature, there's what's called a champion model, where if there's a bill being discussed and let's say 100 people show up, the ledge staff will say, okay, three people for, three against, you're representing your whole group. Now go speak. And they'll give them a sort of time limit. It's quite common at school board meetings across the state to have a time limit. The hour is actually pretty generous. Usually, it's like 30 to 45 minutes. And then a two-hour time limit, one on each, is is pretty robust as well. But it's not uncommon at all to have a time limit. And then actually, the board does a couple of things that are unusual, but I think are smart. One, again, we allow for written comment and public comment. Two, we allow for both in-person and virtual. So that's a choice the board made a few years ago to accommodate folks from across the state. And I wouldn't, I'm just personally would not advise changing that because there it's hard to travel here for some folks. But there is sort of that added layer baked in already from the board.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Member Kevikis?
Hi, Sean. I was just on the website, and I see that there's going to be a link to register soon. That is fantastic because it's really complicated from the field to figure out how to register. And like, if you're doing it in person, do it this way if you're doing that. So I'd love to talk to you about what that's going to look like because any way we can simplify it. I love the fact that we offer the virtual option, especially for families. So I think I love the way we give people three different ways. I think maybe just one way to sign up and just tell us rather than three different ways to sign up will be really helpful.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, member Kevikis. That is one of the elements of the proposed changes are kind of streamlining some of the things that we have heard from folks are most confusing. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Member Katniss?
Thank you for this. I guess I had a question. Is it also possible to to split that into two different votes? The two calls per meeting and then the time limit? Because just personally, like, I'm, I understand, like, the efficiency piece and also sort of getting champions to come and speak. But also, like, I would want to make sure that everybody feels like their voice is being heard as well. And this is a place where I think a lot of people come to voice their concerns. And so I'm just, I want to make sure that that is something we think about.
Yeah, we can certainly divide the two votes. I'll also note that the board has the ability to extend time, like, we do have the ability to extend it. And so perhaps on instances when we have agendized items, we can extend the time. You know, I'm thinking about March ESA handbook timeframe. We can certainly extend it. But Executive Director Ross, what do I'd love your thoughts?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Member Katniss, President Haley is correct. Again, in statute, the public body controls time, manner, place. So even if you have an established policy, the board can amend it as it chooses. So in that case, the board could say, oh, in this meeting, we're going to allow. Or you could amend the policy. Either way is fine.
Dr. Webke?
And no matter the way this vote were to go, people can still put in written comment, written comments unlimited.
Of course.
Yes.
Member Kevikis?
I just follow up thought is I know the champions model is efficient at the legislature, but I think the frustration in the field is there's an assumption that everybody's organized. But I think in and I think probably 20 years ago, that probably was the case where groups organized, a lot of people. But now with social media, I mean, we all see it on our own social, hey, come down and testify. So you never they don't, it's not as well organized as and so people can easily feel left out of the process if you only say X amount of people per.
Is there a desire to extend the one-hour time limit? Or are folks comfortable with the one-hour time limit? And as needed for board meetings, we might announce that we'll have additional time, particularly given the large number of individuals that have requested to speak?
Thank you so much for that. I would prefer that whatever policy we adopt, that we do stay within that within that policy and that timeframe. I do feel that having even reducing it to two calls to the public is very, very generous compared to what I've seen in different meetings and board meetings and stuff like that. So I think the proposed change is very generous.
Any other member Katniss and then or Dr. Webke and then member Katniss?
I would like to echo what Dr. Hightower said. I think that just in my short time on the board on some of the issues, the comments become repetitive, and oftentimes they are the same thing that's been submitted and written. And so I would agree with Dr. Hightower.
Member Katniss?
No, I am thankful for my colleagues' opinions because a lot of you serve on lots of other boards, and a lot of you are involved in many different other ways that this sort of looks. I think my my only concern, and I hope that you understand, is where I'm speaking from, is that everybody's voice is heard. And and so if if we do reduce it, I think that we also should make sure that it is easy, as member Kevikis mentioned, for members of the field to understand how to even submit written comment and different things like that, like make it very easy for the user, because I would hate for someone's voice not to be heard.
I appreciate that comment. Member Katniss, I very I've been a long proponent of everyone that's here gets to speak. So I certainly I feel the same way that if individuals are going to make the time, we should give them. At the same time, I also understand from a predictability, the need to have some sort of sort of constraints or some sort of structure on the time. We have there have been meetings that have gone on for a very long time. So yeah, member Katniss.
So I just have a question. So I guess like to remember Webke's point, sometimes they do get repetitive. How do we ensure that the people that are speaking, like in the champions model, would be a representation of the different aspects?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. So member Katniss, that's not the this model is the the same model we've been using, which is first come, first served. We would not, and I'll be really honest with you, as staff, I would not feel comfortable deciding who does and doesn't speak. It's really that first come, first served model has sort of worked well for the board for years. You know, it's it's an hour is still a good chunk of time to get a cross section of folks to speak. But yeah, we would not, I wouldn't want to put staff in a situation where we're deciding that that champions model is very specific to the ledge. And I think works at the ledge in a way because bills are for or against. I mean, there's a little bit more of a like binary, where that doesn't always exist with board items. So it's one of the reasons we didn't go to the champions model. So we would keep it as a first come, first served for those who register to speak. And then again, written comment being wide open. I mean, there are there are times where we receive 2,000 pages of written comment in a in a month for a meeting. So that's available as well.
Member Kevikis?
Just out of curiosity, what's the maximum amount of requests we've had to speak in person? It's a record.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. I remember Kevikis, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I know we we had a four and a half, almost five-hour call to the public my first march. So that would translate to that number of speakers.
My March meeting, I think it was six.
You'll just divide by two minutes.
Yeah.
No. In addition to the reams of paper, we also read about 30-ish an hour.
Yeah.
Any other comments or thoughts? And I guess per member Katniss question, do we want to vote specifically on two calls per meeting, one policy, one educator discipline, one hour time for each, two minutes, two minutes allotted for each, register online? Are we voting on the one? Or would you guys like to divide the vote, sort of the two calls per meeting, and then a separate vote on the time? Okay, member Katniss, separate time. Okay. So I think any other questions or comments? Superintendent Horn?
In favor of the proposed policy here, I've served on what feels like millions of boards, 24 years on a school board, four years in the legislature, and on this board from 2003 to 2011. And I've never ever seen the marathon sessions that we've had here. This is very, very unique. And I don't think there's any reason we should put ourselves through it anymore.
Okay, so I think if it's okay, what I'd like to do is we'll do two votes. We'll do two motions. See if I can do this correctly. Do I have a motion that the board adopt the recommended updates to the board's format for calls to the public of two calls per meeting, one on policy, one on educator discipline? And register online via the SBA SBE website.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Clay made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so then the second motion will be, I guess I should have included the two minutes allocated for each speaker. So should I?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, this is a board internal policy. So that's yeah, it's what you're doing is fine.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, so then the second motion is for calls to the public. The, the new change would be, do I have a motion to limit one hour of time for each call? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Hightower, do I have a second? Dr. Hagerman, seconds?
President Haley may request just a roll call vote?
Yes. Yes.
Want to confirm though that we can, we can amend that as needed. I mean, it's not in stone. If some rare issue comes up one day and we get 5,000, that was a really bad example. There is flexibility in that policy based on situation.
Executive Director.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Member Kevikis, yeah, again, to use the statutory language, the public body controls time, manner, place. And that permeates every call to the public. So, so if at some point the board did make that decision, that's, that's well within its ability.
So Dr. Hightower made the motion, Dr. Hagerman, second. So.
President Haley?
Yes.
Vice President Hagerman?
Yes.
Superintendent Horn?
Yes.
Member Katniss?
Yes, but can I explain my vote? So I'm voting, I'm voting yes because of what Member Kevikis just clarified about the ability to extend time. The political science major in myself that loves to see democracy in action wants to ensure that every single person, regardless of the time limit, gets the appropriate amount of time to speak. And so for that reason, I'm voting yes with that piece in particular. Thank you.
Dr. Clay?
Yes.
Dr. Core?
Yes.
Dr. Cruzavera is not with us, is that correct? Okay. Dr. Hightower?
Yes, but I do have a question. In the case that there's a lot of folks that show up to speak in public, would we have to take another vote to extend the time?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, protocol would be to have the board vote on that change. Oh, your vote, Dr. Hightower? Member Kevikis? Dr. Webke?
Yes.
President Haley, the motion passes.
Great, thank you. And I appreciated the discussion that was really helpful and the clarification. So thank you. So with that, I think we're moving on to item four. So with that, Deputy Director DePlante.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the boards, my privilege to be able to introduce some folks to present to you on the Professional Practices Advisory Committee. Again, we've talked about the discipline process over the years, we've highlighted different aspects of it. And we wanted to, this retreat, bring members of the P-PAC forward to highlight how they prepare and approach these hearings and those elements. And so I'd like to introduce to you, to kick this session off, Garnett Burns, the Director of Enforcement Actions here at the State Board of Education, Dr. Melissa Sadorf, a P-PAC member, and Matthew Nielsen, a P-PAC member.
Good morning. You know me, I'll introduce you to Dr. Sadorf.
Morning.
And Matthew Nielsen. Dr. Sadorf serves as the superintendent on one of our committees, and Mr. Nielsen is our charter member for one of the committees as well. So can we do this slide? Oh, how do I, oh, right here. Okay. President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, I'm going to start this off by going over some information you might already know, but for new members, it'll be new for them. As you know, our investigation and discipline process, the complaints come in from different areas, right? Come in from the public, from school districts, from the media, from law enforcement. They come into the investigative unit. The chief investigator reviews all of, all of the complaints that come in to see if we have jurisdiction, and then he assigns them to an investigator. The investigator will do a complete investigation that includes contacting law enforcement, the schools, getting the information that is needed, interviewing when it's appropriate. We do not interview students, that's left to law enforcement or the people who specialize in that. We just get those reports from them. After they do their investigation, it's then forwarded to my unit, the Enforcement Actions Unit. We staff that with the Attorney General's Office to see if we should offer a negotiated settlement or if there's not that option. As you know, category one cases, which are sexual cases, don't get settlement agreements. The rest we try to offer. If they are turned down or we can't offer a settlement, it then goes to P-PAC. P-PAC will then consider all of the evidence and testimony in a case, and then that comes to you. You guys will then vote on the P-PAC recommendations, or you do the automatic actions, the summative actions or settlements. All those are on your agenda, and that's the full process. Whoops. I think I might have missed one. Okay, so P-PAC was established as a committee for the board. They are the hearing body for the board for simply disciplinary issues or educator misconduct. That's all they consider. When I first came on as the chief, they used to consider a lot more still with discipline, but they did review surrenders and also negotiated settlements at that time before it came to the board. We pared that down. So now negotiated settlements are not considered by the board or by the P-PAC at all. They come directly to you. So it gives them more time to do the hearings, and that's all they hear. They hear hearings. So the original complaint hearings, they hear review hearings. So if they come back and ask for a rehearing, they hear those as well. Now those 1309 cases where you do the summary suspensions, they'll hear hearings after that. Or the 1307s, if you guys give them a hearing, they'll hear those as well now. And those are new. They just started those in the last couple of months, so it's kind of a learning curve for them. Went the wrong way. When they are considering cases, they have a limited scope of what they can give for discipline, and this rule outlines that. They can do suspension, suspension with conditions, a letter of censure, a letter of censure with conditions, or revocation. They also, with that, have the non-certified, which is prohibiting their right to work. And we do that also with the same kind of guidelines. We do just the suspension of that right to work and prohibiting it kind of goes together. So that's, and then again, it comes to you for consideration. I'm going to touch on one part of this and then pass it over to Dr. Sadorf, the hearing officer or the presiding officer. I'm going to discuss that. So prior to having a hearing officer, we had, for instance, Dr. Sadorf is the chair, and she would sit, as President Haley does, and try to control the meeting and run it from beginning to end. So that kind of got a little hectic after a while, and we decided to, to put a hearing officer in. The board voted on that and put that in. The hearing officer is a non-voting member of the P-PAC. She is impartial. She is only here to run the meeting kind of like a judge. She swears people in. She makes sure that what's being introduced as evidence is pertinent to the case. She will rule on things whether they can be admitted or not. And she makes sure that witnesses behave, basically, and if there's an issue, she will have people removed from a hearing. It hasn't happened. There's been a few kind of contentious ones, but, so the hearings are ran much smoother with the hearing officer, and it takes that responsibility off the members, so they're able to focus on the case and pay attention to what they need to do. So I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members. Pleasure to be able to speak with you today, and I'll pick up where Garnett left off. And you'll notice that there are established in rule that there is a variety of voices that are seated on this, on this P-PAC. And the reason for that is to ensure that you have different perspectives. They all sit on different seats in the stakeholders that touch a student, whether it's the superintendent, the principal, we have charter representation, there's laypeople, obviously. And so that, that variety of perspectives, I think, really does help to ensure that whatever the conversations are and the recommendations that ultimately come to you have been vetted by a variety of people that bring different, different assets to the conversation. And I give that to you because I'll mess it up.
I'm going to try with this, and you're going to.
We'll see how that works.
Okay. So we've already talked about the diversity of the roles and the experience. Dr. Sadorf just touched on that, but I want to maybe put a little bit of a finer point on that. That because we have people from different sectors of education, different experience levels, but also, you know, we have, similar to you, we have specified, we have a charter representative, we have these different roles. And I've found in my experience, I think Dr. Sadorf would agree, that having that diversity of experience and background really does actually help in practice when we sit in on these hearings. Someone inevitably will have had an experience that, that will relate to the case at hand, and it helps add some context and expertise to that.
We do an annual refresher training, and that's not just procedural. Really, it's an update on any ethical considerations that we might need to know moving forward. It's recent cases that we might need to take into account when we're having our deliberations. But what it really does is build consistency across our discussions. And you know that we have two P-PACs right now that operate, and that inter-rater reliability that we talk about so often in schools really is important. And so the training helps to establish that. It also helps new members feel more comfortable with the process, and it gives seasoned members an opportunity to do some, some coaching and some support around their expectations on, on serving. We were just talking this morning about how membership to these P-PACs has really been consistent. And you have long-serving members that really truly understand the process and are committed to the process. And I, and I think Nan Williams is the one that has served the longest, and that's been over a decade. I think I've been serving for 10 years. Matt's been serving for seven. Is that what you figured?
About four, yeah.
Four. Long time. But, but that consistency, I think, speaks to the process and, and to the importance of the work. We do have a matrix that we utilize as a guidance for how we structure our recommendations. It is not a straitjacket. It truly is something that helps with that consistency that we're talking about when we, when we're making decisions. But the P-PAC can and should apply professional judgment when they're having these conversations, because there is context in all of the cases that we're seeing. And I want to make sure that you note that we take many different things into account when we're making those recommendations. And, and to Matt's point too, the expertise that we bring to the conversation from our different seats around this P-PAC table really helps to, to frame those conversations as well with the recommendations.
Okay, you're up again on this one.
Oh, I am. So with that lens in mind, let's talk about why we serve. And there's really two commitments that we hold dear. And the first one is we want to protect children. That's really essentially the bottom line for all of us. That's why we want to make sure that we're, we're taking this job seriously. It's important to us. And the second thing is that we want to make sure that the profession is protected also. Educators hold public trust. And the choices that they make can often ripple into classrooms and into their communities. And so I want to, I want to focus a little bit on protecting children. It means that off-campus behaviors sometimes have an impact in the classroom. And when there is a risk of student safety, or there's a risk that undermines public trust in our educators or in our education systems, that's something that, that we take seriously and we take that to heart. It means that we want to have proactive prevention, where we are ensuring that educators are fit for the roles that we're asking them to fulfill. It means that we want to maintain public confidence. And we know that the public expects that, that educators adhere to high standards. And, and we want to make sure that that is honored. And we know that it means that we are also protecting the future pipeline of educators in our state. And every child deserves a high, highly qualified, well-prepared teacher at the front of the room and as well a prepared leader at the, at the head of the school or at the head of the district. And when we, when we don't hold those standards in place, what that means is the pipeline starts to falter because it's not an attractive profession when there's not that public trust. It also helps us protect our colleagues, protects the profession. Those who uphold standards deserve to know that others are upholding them as well, and that if they're not, there are things that are being done about that. Ethical issues often live in gray areas. And so as P-PAC members, we have an opportunity to step into those gray areas and really figure out what's going on and work those through. The P-PAC process really gives space to examine those nuances that can come up in those ethical discussions or decision points. Not every choice that an educator makes that, that might get them in front of a P-PAC hearing is illegal. But it might be unethical, or it might be damaging. And so we have a role to play in determining if those life choices that are being made by educators really collide with the standards that they're being upheld to, to hold. And, and we really look to determine whether or not that line has been crossed.
And we'll, we'll talk a little more about what the statistics look like on the next slide. But Dr. Sadorf just mentioned that the P-PAC is the body that takes the time to hear all of these cases. And some of you have served on the P-PAC in the past and know what that means. And in some cases, it means a lot of time. And I mean in all caps, a lot of time. Certain cases just take longer than others. And there are a lot of reasons why that might be. They might have legal representation with them, which they often do. And sometimes the, the details, the facts of a certain case are just really complicated, and it takes time to get all of that out. I have, I have never seen a, or I've never experienced in my time on, on the committee, a hearing where I felt like someone didn't get to say everything that they wanted to say or, or needed to say. So I want to drive home that point, that the P-PAC and the hearing officer, in my experience, have done a great job of giving the respondents or applicants their time and allowing them to be heard. Now, if things get repetitive, and we've heard that three times before in this hearing, then it might be sped up a little bit. But I, in my experience, the, the committee as a whole and the, the hearing officer do a fantastic job of really taking it all in. So I want to make sure that, that we drive home that point. Next, we're going to talk a little about the data. So the number of meetings for the Professional Practices Advisory Committee range from anywhere 10 to 12 meetings per year on average. Sometimes that's more. I believe last year it was 16. But usually 10 to 12. And in any given year, somewhere between 80 to 100 cases are heard in those hearings. Or sorry, scheduled. We, we do get some cancellations from time to time. The, the breakdown of these cases, and I was just telling Dr. Sadorf this morning that as I was reviewing these numbers again that were inputted, I was not surprised, but kind of disappointed in the confirmation that this was for me in my experience. So you can see the largest number there is sexual misconduct. Again, that wasn't surprising to me, but it was, I was disappointed to have that confirmed to me in my experience. The next 26% are non-sexual assault issues that come up before the committee. 20% are substance abuse. We have a range of those. You may know, as you see these come before you, they could be, a lot of them are DUIs, but there's a range. There are other things that happen. And then 11% fraud. And the, the last thing I'll, I'll make a note of here is that we have the bottom box there. Approximately 40% of the respondents appear and 60 do not. And the 60, we call paper cases because there's not a human attached to the paper. It's just the paper. They still get a hearing, but. They still get a hearing, but typically, you know, those ones don't show. So 60% do not show for their hearing.
I think what's important to note here is that there's a story underneath these numbers. There is law enforcement that is more heavily present in cases that we're seeing recently, which means more records, more exhibits, more live witnesses that we are interacting with during hearings. And that is really good for due process, but it then is incumbent on us as P-PAC members to ensure that we're taking the time to really parse through the information that they're giving us. Because we need to be meticulous about what's being presented to us. It's important when we're making those deliberations and that recommendation. I think what's also important to note is that these data trends don't take away from the fact that every case is unique and that there is context to them. They're not just numbers, these are stories that tell about the challenges that educators are facing right now in our state. So when you look at the fact that 20% of the people that come before the P-PAC are due to an increase in substance abuse, what that says to me is that we need greater systems of support for our teachers and for our leaders in our systems. The presence of fraud at 1 in 10 cases means that educator ethics goes beyond the classroom. And it really is about finances and credentials and honesty in these cases. The, and Matt touched on the fact that 60% don't come before the P-PAC at all, but that means that we really need to pay attention to the paper that we're given. Because without them being here, we can't parse out what may or may not be an extenuating circumstance, or a context that we might miss if we're not really being careful about what we're reviewing. There's more attorney presence by our respondents, which means that the hearings are more adversarial, and that just takes more time. And that growing number of pieces of paper, that documentation really means that we have to get in there and be deliberate. The complexity, I will also say, isn't just legal, it's also emotional. Many of the things that we are hearing are deeply personal circumstances for these people that really require us to be very sensitive about how we're dealing with and how we're interacting with them. Excellent.
Okay.
I think this is me.
Yep.
By the time we get these cases, there's already been substantial upstream work. And Garnett talked a little bit about the intake and the investigation and the Enforcement Action Unit getting involved and the AG's posture on things. So our job, when it gets to us, is to prepare with the same seriousness that all of them have taken to get to the point where they're standing in front of the P-PAC. And that's to read deeply and to really note inconsistencies that we're seeing in the documentation, and then to bring an educator lens to the facts. I'll let you speak a little bit about that.
Yeah, maybe just, my own thoughts on that and my own experience are that that work happens. So members of the P-PAC take that very seriously. We get the materials from the investigative unit a week prior, and I can tell you, I am in assembly many times. You know, from your own experience on this board, that that's what it takes. If you want to have any idea of what you're going to be presented with when the meeting comes around, that happens on the P-PAC. The people that sit on these committees are dedicated and committed to actually reviewing the material. We're going to talk about it again, but I'll just mention it here, that it's often the case that we'll be in a hearing, and one of the P-PAC members will mention something that is on page 525 that the AG's office just either didn't mention, or missed, or something that has a very serious implication for the hearing. And so that's happened many times, and it's just confirmation to me that people are reading. They're doing their work ahead of time so that they're prepared for the hearings.
There's also oftentimes last-minute documentation that comes at us, or changes in documents, or changes in recommendations, new witnesses that might come into play. And so that causes, again, we really need to be paying attention. We really need to have an understanding of all of the things that make up that particular case. I will say that the diverse experience that Matt referred to when he talked about the different voices that are on the P-PAC means that we see things that other P-PAC members might not see. If I'm a superintendent and I've been a business manager for my school district, I might see something that he, as a charter school principal, hasn't come across, and vice versa. And so we really do complement each other in terms of where we sit in that seat on the P-PAC. There is a real weight of responsibility that comes with this position, because we know that the recommendations that we're giving to you have impact on educators' livelihoods and lives. And they have impact on the communities and the students that those children, that they're serving. And so, you know, those recommendations that we give to you really are thoughtfully deliberated, and there is a lot of information that's considered when we do the recommendations. And we do it because we care. We really are committed to making sure that our children are safe in our schools throughout the state and that our educators are held to standards, and those things are not just lip service for us.
Okay, so on this slide, we just want to touch on what an administrative hearing at the P-PAC looks like versus what you might picture in a court of law. They're different. An administrative hearing, it's less formal. Hearsay can be presented as evidence, it can be considered in the case. And ultimately, when it comes down to decision-making time for a recommendation to you here on the State Board, the standard for that is that it's more likely than not that it happens. So a preponderance of the evidence versus what Dr. Sadorf is going to talk about here in a court of law. So you just have to be, in these administrative hearings, you have to be convinced that this probably happened the way that the AG's office has laid out, or the state has laid out.
Yeah, we don't have the same standard preponderance of the evidence, I think is the bottom line there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So there are a lot of materials that are entered into the record, and we know that you have access to those as well when you're getting our recommendations. Those late additions sometimes come into play. And I don't think it's, I can overemphasize enough the importance of live testimony, because the people that are sitting in front and answering questions that we are able to ask them, it really does give us an opportunity to establish credibility, to see if there are inconsistencies between the documentation that we've been given and what they're telling us. It's a safeguard, really, for both them and us to ensure that there's ability to clarify things that need to be clarified, so that nothing gets lost, nothing slips through the cracks. And sometimes, like I said, there's inconsistencies that are revealed in the documentation when we are able to talk to somebody. And that gives us time to reconcile those gaps when we're able to ask questions of them. I mean, the goal is really to provide to you a record that supports of a clear and right-sized recommendation for you to consider. I'll also say that the hearings can be very emotionally charged. I know that you have the ability to go back and to listen and view those recordings. And it is our responsibility to remain impartial during a hearing, and that's often difficult, especially when there's emotion from the respondents. But it is our responsibility to make sure that we're taking all evidence into consideration outside of the emotional nature of the case. Deliberations that we have really are interactive and they're reflective, and I hope that you've been able to hear that and read that in the transcripts that you get. They're not just procedural. We truly push each other's thinking. And we want to make sure that we're covering all angles.
I'll just give you a quick anecdote, this is unplanned, Dr. Sadorf.
I love it, okay.
On the note that she just mentioned, we push each other. We have great relationships amongst ourselves on the P-PAC, and all of us are friendly. But sometimes, you get differing opinions.
Yes.
And you have strong personalities. And so, I love him, Dr. Stewart is a great guy, he's on P-PAC with me. And I don't know if Garnett and Don and folks remember this from the last hearing, but I had said something, I'd give a comment on the particular case that we were hearing. And he directly just opposed what I said right after in his comment. And forcefully, he's a great guy, and he has an opinion, I like Dr. Stewart for the record. And afterwards, he came over to me and he said, "Hey, I kept looking at you like I was going after you, but I want you to know that I didn't mean that." And I said, "Look, I was afraid for about five or 10 seconds" that we were gonna, you know, and so we laughed about that. But we really, we do push each other's thinking, and he had a different view on that case. And we talk it through, and ultimately, you know, we all get our vote. But it's a great group of people that are serious and take their job seriously, but also work well together. Even though from time to time, we have different opinions on things, so. Let's go to the next one. Okay, this is me, right?
Yep.
So the, as you know, the matrix that we have that Dr. Sadorf is going to talk about, we use that to make some of our decisions, to inform what we're going to recommend to you once we're done with the case. But leading up to that, we go through, and I think it's a really good thing that we do this intentionally, and step by step, we'll say, "Okay, was this, were there any mitigating factors in this case?" And we go through, here's a list, and there's a list in our paperwork that says, "Does the individual have a history of mental health issues?" And that's one on the list, there's another one that says that they've taken steps, they've been cooperative with enforcement staff. And so we go through that list, and we say, "Were there mitigating factors in this case?" And in the same way, we have a list of aggravating factors that we'll go through. And by the way, there's H usually, there's other, we can add another one. And if it's not in the list for mitigating or aggravating. And so we take those into account, we also look at, was there a history? Is this part of a pattern with this individual? That they've continually violated or conducted themselves in an immoral or illegal fashion? And then how egregious was the violation or the issue? And so all of these feed into, they come out in our discussion, and you've probably, as you've gone back and looked at these hearings, you've probably seen us talk about that. And I think it's good that we do that explicitly and have that list, because it reminds you to pay attention, was there, is there anything that they've done leading up to today from the time that the incident happened that would mitigate, could mitigate what you're going to suggest to the State Board of Education happen for this individual?
We do have a matrix, as I know that you're aware, and that really does help to guide consistency. But again, each case is unique. And so based on the mitigating and aggravating factors that Matt just talked about, we're going to weigh each case on its own merits and come up with something that is right-sized for the issue at hand. The thing that I think is important to also note is that members can explain their vote, and they should. And oftentimes, I mean, this is someplace where you can get kind of a deeper insight into what they're thinking and why. And it also lends transparency and accountability to the process. We want to make sure that you have a record of our conversations and why we're thinking what we're thinking, because that helps you ultimately to make a decision when you're asked to make a decision. As Matt was saying, that disagreement is really healthy. If we're all thinking the same way, nobody, you know, if we're all thinking like me, nobody's thinking but me. And so that consensus isn't always about, it's not always possible, but the process does allow for everyone to have their perspective considered. Those plurality of voices really ensures that there's not one perspective that dominates the conversation or the decision-making at hand. And that collective wisdom really does shape the recommendation. You have seen, and we have experienced, that there are oftentimes split votes. And what that means is there's been a healthy discussion and a difference of opinion, and that's good for due process. It means that there's strength in the opinions of others and the process is doing what it's supposed to do. And we hope that the transcripts really capture those deliberations, which means that you can be assured that we're taking things seriously.
And then, if you could advance the next slide for me. President Haley, Superintendent for members of the board, just a recap, we highlight this in staffing, the materials are provided to you via assembly. It's P-PAC recommendations, the finding of fact, conclusions of law, aggravating and mitigating factors which they just described, and then all the complaint, the evidence, and the transcripts. And then, in per-board rule, you get to accept, modify, reject, remand, or convene as the hearing body on any of those cases. And so Attorney General, we've talked a lot about the process in the board meetings. If you, you know, if you do the other ones other than accept, likewise, as P-PAC explaining their vote, you should kind of tell why you're going in that direction, the rationale for that. And then advisement is also to not hear new information, or arguments are different than like brand-new information, because it's outside of the hearing and there's due process considerations. The next slide for me. And then just, you know, after your decision as a board, there are still recourse for respondents. They have the right to ask in many of the cases for a review, a rehearing from the board. And then they also can obviously go to the next step above in Superior Court.
Okay, so I think we're ready for questions, if you have any.
No, we have questions for them.
Oh, we have questions for them. She's keeping me on track. Okay, go ahead.
So our goal really is transparency and a strong record, so that you're able to fulfill your role when it comes to educator discipline. And to that end, we have a couple of questions that we would like for you to consider. The first one is that historically, the P-PAC recommendations are upheld. But how can we make sure that when they're not, we are clarifying for you our decision-making process, or things that we might be able to do differently so that you have an understanding of where we're coming from, even in light of you maybe remanding, or changing a recommendation, or we're doing something different? So what do you need from us to make your job easier?
Dr. Webke? I'll start, so first of all, thank you very much, this was extremely beneficial and very helpful. And I don't know if I have an answer to that question in terms of the clarity and thoughtful, you know, but I will say that as a new member of the board, this was extremely helpful. And I would really like to see, maybe in future, as new people are onboarded, that this presentation be made before our first meeting. I think one of the things as a new board member, and I'm a career educator in this state, and I've always known that P-PAC exists. But what I was not prepared for was the breadth and the depth of the situations that are brought before P-PAC. And you said exactly- And you eloquent, you said exactly what I have said privately, um, that this is the livelihood of people. And, um, but the well-being and safety of children being of paramount importance. And so, um, I just never really realized the depth and the breadth. You know, I, I've been around for a long time, but, and still, but when you read about it, it becomes a different thing. So the thing that I would like to direct to the staff is perhaps as new board members, um, I know we all come with different experiences, so some of us may be more knowledgeable. Um, this is the first time I've heard that some people here have served on that. So you ha- you come definitely with a different perspective than someone like myself who's just spent her life in education, but has never been before, thank God. I've never done any, you know, I've never been before, nor have I had friends that I've been aware of that have come before. So I just think my experiences have been different, so it, perhaps that would be helpful.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Dr. Webke, members of the board. Um, so what the, the beauty of this retreat is, um, we are clipping all of these presentations and making them part of either onboarding for future board members or resources for, yeah. Yeah, we're double dipping everywhere we can, so a, a number, uh, uh, so yeah, so that's, yes, yeah, yeah. So there's, so thank you, Dr. Webke. Yeah, that's, that's been part of the plan, that we wanted something like this, uh, in our back pocket, uh, for new board members, but also for board members who may have questions down the road. But thank you.
And if I can just add, I'm not sure I said this, but I wanna thank you, um, for the time and also Garnett and the staff. Once again, I was overwhelmed at the number. And then to hear that you go through all the cases, but not everybody. When people show up, I know it adds more complexity and, um, so, uh, and you are volunteers, just as we are too. And so I just really wanna thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, uh, Dr. Hightower?
Thank you so much. Um, I know you give so much of your time, dedication, care. And although it's, uh, less than 1% of educators that have this, uh, type of discipline is absolutely heart wrenching. And, um, the why and the mission of the P-PAC is, uh, spot on. So thank you for that. I know, um, Dr. Sadorf for many years, she's nationally known leader. Um, so to give this time, and I also know that when, um, there are requests for members to serve, not many superintendents raise their hand, uh, to be part of, of, uh, P-PAC. So thank you, um, both and, and all the members that, that serve. And I'm also, uh, so grateful to know that independence of that. I mean, that's one of the, one of the roles in, in serving on a, on a board. Um, my question is, do you know how many cases may go to actually like a judicial, um, proceeding outside of the hearings with P-PAC? And I don't know if you have the answer to that, but thank you.
Member Hightower, I can tell you that in the last three years, we've had three cases go. So it's very few that actually go to judicial review.
Thank you.
Dr. Kevi- um, Dr., I keep doing this, I like this. A member, honorary Dr., member Kevi Kus.
Um, there are not words, uh, to tell you how grateful we are for the amount of work that you guys do. And staff does an amazing job. That part of the agenda, I've been in, I've been around state board meetings for 25 years in, in my career. That part of the agenda was the most daunting part of accepting this role. I mean, literally spoke to my husband about it before taking this on. So I guess what I would say is maybe not directly answering your question, but indirectly is, show us grace and mercy as well because we don't get the benefit of spending all that time. And so making those final decisions, as you know, it's been very rare that we've done something different. But please know that it's not that we're second guessing you or, or questioning the work that you guys did. It's just, it's really daunting for us as well to sometimes make those decisions, especially if they come and they've made those emotional pleas. So just, uh, just know that we're never second guessing you. It's just hard for us to make those decisions sometimes as well. Thank you for everything that you do to help us keep kids safe.
Dr. Clay?
Good morning. Um, again, I echo, thank you for this very inform- informative briefing. I have a question. You, you asked, um, what could you do to help? One of them is, um, your matrix. Um, what does that look like? And how old is it? That's my question.
Is you, do you want to? I can speak to it, I don't know how old it is. Uh, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, uh, Member Clay. Uh, I don't know how old it is. It's at least two or three years old. It's the board-approved matrix. And so the format is just that, it's a matrix with the different types of, of discipline issues that we might face in any particular hearing. Uh, and then there's a minimum and a maximum, uh, range of different consequences for each of the different types of discipline issue.
The only thing that I would add there is that there's, um, flexibility in that.
Yep.
So if we get into a hearing and on paper, the hearing matches a particular square in the matrix. If we say, okay, they have a, um, extreme DUI and what do we do that would do on the first offense? Then the matrix shows, uh, as you move across, well, what, what is the recommended action? If we get into a hearing and there's a lot more context that sheds light in one direction or another, then we may, uh, recommend something different that, that varies from what's in the matrix, just so you're aware.
Yeah. And that's where that context comes in and taking the case in its totality.
Thank you. So I would ask, could we get a copy of that? Because my thing is, I want to understand your perspective. You know, and why you're doing what you're doing and where you're getting, you know, all this information from. Because what it would do with me is, as I'm looking through everything, I'm gonna be looking at the matrix. The, yeah, the matrix. This, this will help a lot. Can we get this in digits too? Um, I'm that electronic person, if I can get it. This will help a lot with the perspective. Because I also, um, wanting to support decisions, I don't want to do that blindly. Okay, I need to know as much information, not too much. I don't need to get into details, but enough to say, oh, I get that. Or, or I, because sometimes there's a lot of, um, white space and I have to fill that in myself. Or I have to go by how my gut feeling, you know, et cetera, et cetera, or my experiences. Um, and as you know, I'm down, down, down south. So a lot of things that happening up here, I have no idea about. I just go by what I'm reading, my gut. Um, and, and, you know, all these other different things. But this right here will help me a lot. So the question has been answered. I would, I, I wanted to, and okay, this was 2017, right? Do you, here, here's another question. Do you think this needs to be relooked at because, or updated? Because we've had the pandemic, you know, 2020, things have changed. Or maybe, maybe not, but is that something that is down the line? Can we look, relook this? And I haven't looked at it all. I'm just saying, I'm just looking at, um, the year. Is, do you think this is good now or should we go ahead and take a look at it?
You wanna answer that or can? President Haley, Member Clay, um, what, what I will say is that there's, there's the floor and there's the ceiling as far as the types of, of potential recommendations for discipline.
Mm-hmm.
And there is flexibility within that. And so I don't think that the types of discipline that we're seeing is necessarily different. Maybe there's things that need to be added as far as things that are coming in front of the P-PAC more often than not. But because it's a range, I feel pretty comfortable, and, and I'm not gonna speak for you, but I feel pretty comfortable that it is a reasonable range of discipline for each of the offenses that are listed on there. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I would just say, um, I, it doesn't happen obviously in every case, but it may happen in every, uh, session where I feel like what the matrix recommends does not fit the case. That's not uncommon per se. It doesn't hap- like I said, it doesn't happen every time, but it's not uncommon either where I feel like there needs to be a tweak to something. Now, I don't know if that means that, that, that warrants a change to the matrix. I think what it means is that maybe the P-PAC should wrap their arms around the idea that we have some flexibility here and we should probably use it to, to, um, to match the situation. So I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Hagerman?
So you guys are into the area of questions that I was gonna ask, it was about the matrix and whether it still fits? Or if the, do you see types of cases changing at all? It sounds like there might be a little more law enforcement involvement or a little more lawyer involvement, but that doesn't necessarily lead to a change to the matrix? Um, am I summarizing kind of the feedback you've given so far?
Yeah. I think that's right. It's, um, I don't know, the, that the content of the cases is changing so much as
The process.
Yeah, yeah, the process and the complexity because of the process. So we get, we do have more attorneys showing up. Uh, more of the respondents come with legal representation and that adds a lot of complexity and time, which is fine. It's part of the process, it's their right and they should, they should do that if they want to do that. But, um, as far as the content or, or the sub, you know, the, the issue that brings them before the P-PAC, I don't know that I've seen a lot of change in my time.
No. Um, I, I will say that when I first started, it was rare that someone would come with a, an attorney representing them. Um, more often than not, they represented themselves. And so that has been the biggest change, I think, in my 10 years. Uh, and then like the data showed, the uptick in sexual misconduct has been, um, something that we're seeing more and more of. And, and that, obviously, there's context to all of that and a lot more documentation and a lot more witnesses, uh, more complexity in, in those cases. So I would say that those, those would be the two things that are truly different in the last decade.
So I guess the two things I would, to kind of answer the question, I, I definitely look at the feedback when people answer, especially in cases that are split decisions. I go to those split decisions and I'm reading kind of people's thinking. So the more you do that and make sure that all the members know that the board members absolutely do, especially on cases like that, read that. Um, I appreciate the fact that the beginning of the year, you guys are also talking to kind of have the matrix as a, a factor to develop consistency, but then the talk. I don't know if in future retreats that, that feedback might come to us even as an executive summary that the P-PAC discussed, these are the kind of cases that they're working on. So that kind of gets to like Dr. Clay's thinking around, when I see a case and I see a result, like, hey, I, I heard in the retreat that these are the kind of cases we're getting and this is how we're trying to approach it and make sure that there's a consistency across the two teams. I think that would be helpful too. And then if the cases ever do change and that there's an element to the matrix that, because I knew when I was on the P-PAC, when there was a case that was way off the matrix, sometimes those were the trickiest ones to, to kind of like, what's, what's our grounding element? To figure out like what reasonable should look like in this case can get tricky.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Clay?
I have another question. You had said that you don't interview students at all. Um, so the question is, how do you get the full story if you don't interview, interview the students? Um, especially, you know, with some of these, um, issues that are going on and having that be put in writing so that we can see that? Because that's another gap, that's another gap that I have to fill by my perception or experiences or whatever. So could you, um, answer that?
Uh, President Haley, um, Member Clay, we do go into executive session if there are student testimonies that we have access to. And so, um, that is something that we do have from time to time, especially in those sexual misconduct cases where, uh, we have recorded, uh, video from law enforcement where they've done, um, uh, what do you call it?
Interviews.
An interview, yeah, with a student that's involved in something like that. Um, so we, we have the access to that from time to time. Um, and then just the documentation, um, whether it's cell phone interaction or computer interaction, if there's technology involved, uh, witness testimony that are, are, um, not, not students, but are related to the issue at hand. Um, so to your point, no, we don't always get a chance to talk to the student involved. But when there is the opportunity to have that information, that's obviously something that we're taking into great consideration. Anything else you wanna? Yep.
Dr. Clay, I just wanted to touch, when I, when I say we don't interview students, um, that's generally because they're victims, right? Um, so we have the forensic interviewing team that is through law enforcement, they will interview. Also, we get the reports from the school, like administrators, they'll interview the students. We leave it up to those people. If there's a time when we need to interview students, we will reach out. It, it's not that it never happens, it does happen sometimes. We'll reach out to the parent and arrange that through them, um, and have them come in with the student. But that is a rare occasion. We do have students testify when it's okay with the parent. But the, our attorneys generally try to have a parent come testify in lieu of having the student, you know, talk about what the student told them. And we also encourage, I personally encourage the students to write a victim impact statement to get their side of what happened out if we don't have something clearly from them. So we do take steps to get information from the students clearly. Um, did that help a little bit?
Yes, that did. My, my concern is getting a 360 degree view on what's going on with as least amount of white noise or gray or that we can. I don't, I don't, I don't want us to try to fill in the blanks because when we fill in the blanks, we're gonna fill it in with our feelings and our emotions or with what the newspaper has said or what, you know, all these other things. And all I want, you know, are the facts and no feelings. And that is really hard when we have white noise in there. So my thing is to lessen the white, as much white noise as possible so that we can get into, um, the meat and potatoes of what's going on.
I can tell you that with the hearings, it is all factual. So anything that the P-PAC considers are only documents and evidence that are admitted by the hearing officer that she considers pertinent to the case that are either legal or administratively factual to the allegations specifically brought. So the P-PAC itself doesn't consider, um, all the outside white noise, if that, if that helps at all too. I know that that doesn't help you guys when you're hearing the news and everything going on, but, but their votes and their hearings and, and the transcripts you see are all based around just the evidence that's presented to them in the hearing. And they don't know about the cases prior to them being given the materials. So there's no, um, there's nothing prior to that. They are just given the materials for each case.
Okay, understood. I, I, let me clarify white noise or, or gaps. I just want to make sure 360 degrees of what is going on, you see it.
Okay.
And you may not see it. I'm not saying, and here I go, I'm just on the outside looking in, which is really good because we want everybody's perspectives. I just wanna make sure you guys get everything you need and, um, check every box possible. That's all, that's why I asked about the, the kids. Are those boxes checked? But you said that another agency, you basically bring you that information.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that was what I was trying to, to find out. Thank you.
Dr. Hightower?
Thank you so much. I do have a question, uh, related to if a family submits a claim, uh, to the Risk Retention Trust or any other, uh, legal firm. Do you receive that information or, uh, for court authority settlements or is that independent?
Uh, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, Dr. Hightower, uh, that's independent of the board. We don't have that information.
Thank you.
I, um, answering, to answer your questions, I, I do have a, maybe have some comments or questions back on how can the P-PAC help clarify deliberations and decision-making? There have been instances that have come before the board where cases have been consolidated. And, um, it'd be great in the materials that we receive, uh, to have some sort of indication as to why those cases were consolidated. Um, because, you know, we are in an emotional filled room and people bring perspective and insight and comments and, uh, third-party validators or those that are against them. And so it, it would be helpful for us, perhaps, for you to put that context as to, as you
as you make decisions, you hear about things. Um, I think that could be very, very helpful to us. And then I'll let I'll give you a minute to respond, but I also have another question or comment.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, uh, think that's we are taking that to account. That's more for staff. The to make sure those materials are included and kind of go back to Dr. Clay's point as well. Like all evidence, transcripts, all those materials are included in what shared with the board. Um, I think the the message staff is taking is developing a way to help navigate those materials a bit a bit better. So we're that's definitely something we're we're taking into consideration.
Okay. I just don't remember like reading specifically um, why it's specific case or cases were consolidated. Um, I know you all do a phenomenal job of briefing us and making sure um, questions are answered, but I just it sometimes would be great to be able to say we've made an executive decision or the P PAC has made a decision to consolidate cases because of or uh, pursue this direction.
President Haley, just for uh, clarity, the any decision for along those lines is a legal decision and is made by the hearing officer. So that's all part of a a separate hearing to consider consolidation of cases, but which is pretty rare, but we yeah, but yeah, we can absolutely staff can can make sure if if those especially outliers like that, something unusual like that, make sure you guys are clearly um, it's clearly illustrated to you where to find those materials.
Okay, great. And then also, um, a number of times there are individuals that come in and uh, you all have gone through, you have your matrix and you're making decisions. Um, and then individuals will come in and they'll give testimony or their attorneys will provide perspective and then we'll hear another attorney's perspective on a particular case and you're like, oh, but you know, there's been some remediation or um, they've taken proactive steps to ameliorate some things in their background. But there you all do make recommendations based on the settlement agreement contested actions. You 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 have sort of a matrix. And so um, I don't know if there's anything else you can do, but sometimes it's almost like we've come to this conclusion, we've made this recommendation because this is the process. Because sometimes in our, when we sit here and we hear compelling statements, you're like, oh, perhaps we this was a bad decision. Maybe you shouldn't have made this decision. Um, maybe we need to go against what it is, but then it goes against precedent. It goes against sort of the standards that are set before you. So perhaps maybe there's a way to um, uh, I don't know if you could read our minds, but maybe provide some additional guidance of we've come to this conclusion. Yes, these people have made such and such steps in their lives, but you know, this is the consequence of making such decision. Um, these are men and women that have the privilege of teaching our our students and they've made these decisions and this is the consequence. I know you write all that out and we read it, but sometimes in the moment we get caught up with the emotion.
So if I can um, comment on that, I th- this is one of the reasons that I was most excited to come and talk to you all today was to drive home this point. Um, and I there are a couple of aspects to this. One, as you all know, uh, we talked about it earlier on one of our slides. The P PAC dedicates a lot of their time and attention to not just sitting in the hearing and listening, but also all of the prep work. I tried to mention it along the way through these slides that there's a lot of information in the materials that never comes out in the hearing at all. But it's been read many times by the P PAC members. Or maybe it doesn't come out until the very end when the P PAC is discussing amongst themselves. Because again, I said earlier, the AG's office just didn't include it. Maybe they didn't see it as significant or um, it it maybe they missed it. That's possible, but I think probably the folks sitting in these chairs in these hearings see it as significant in the situation at hand. And so that caught their eye in their preparatory work leading up to these hearings. So um, a couple of things, I would say I personally, and I I won't speak for everybody, you might, I'd be interested to hear your thoughts on this. If the State Board of Education refers back a case or two or 10 uh, for a rehearing to the P PAC, I would have no issue at all, zero concerns, because I would say, okay, well, they heard something from the respondent or from their representation, from their attorney that made them think maybe you did get it wrong. And I am okay with the State Board of Education second guessing the P PAC. Totally fine. Uh, in my view, I'm this totally, this is absolutely just me. I will not speak for Dr. Sador. But if you send something back to the P PAC for a rehearing, I'd say, wait, let us rehear. Maybe we missed something. Maybe something didn't come out in the hearing. We'll rehear it again. And fair enough, that's absolutely within your right and it's within your right to do any of these things. You you heard earlier from from Bruce, what your options are in any of these cases. And so no issue, no problem. Where where I um, start to struggle a little bit is where the decision is changed completely. Then I think, well, okay, the P PAC took a lot of time and effort in preparation. They sat through these hearings and now the opposite decision was made after um, after the P PAC sat through all of this and did it and in a in a truncated version of that hearing, the the deciding body reversed the decision. Now, that's a personal issue. I recognize that. It's well within your right to do anything on anything within your uh, you know, your responsibility, your line of responsibilities. Um, but I just want to drive home that point that the members of the P PAC take their job seriously. They invest their time on a volunteer basis, leading up to and during the hearings. And it is, it's hard to to Dr. Clay's point. It's hard and to uh, to Ms. Haley's point, it's it's very difficult when you're sitting there, listening to someone plead for their livelihood for all of the different things. I we hear it all the time and it's hard. I I want to recognize that. Having said that, um, it's you have to consider all of it in totality and sometimes more time. Being a guy that loves efficiency, sometimes more time is is better. And um, getting getting more context around that and sometimes that that is important. So I'll let you.
What I will say, uh, President Haley, is that the process itself lends its um, there's opportunities within the case for the P PAC to interact with the witnesses, to interact with the respondents, to ask questions, to clarify, to ensure that we have an understanding of everything that's being brought forward to fill gaps if there are any in our perspectives. Um, there are also, when we start deliberations, opportunities to have discussions around uh, the findings of fact before we adopt them. To discuss aggravating and mitigating factors that we think might be at play. And to have a robust conversation before we do any voting on what we're going to add to the record. So that you have an understanding of why we're thinking what we're thinking and the disagreements that might come up in the process of those conversations. Um, the conclusions of law, same thing. We have an opportunity to discuss. And then the recommendation itself. I am very aware that it is not easy to make a recommendation that has an impact on someone's livelihood. And so I intentionally, as Chair of of P PAC two, and I know that Nan does the same thing for P PAC one, I ask for conversation because I want to make sure that everybody is is uh, comfortable with where they are. If there's any clarifying questions that need to be made before the recommendation, that we have a chance to talk through those things. If there are disagreements, they're they're brought forward so that we understand where we are as a as a as a hearing body. That, I think, is part of what makes the P PAC process so uh, successful when we're dealing with things that, yes, there it is hard. And as I said before, we are, we have to be impartial during emotionally charged conversations. We owe it to those people to be clear thinking and to take those things that are at hand as far as facts and mitigating and aggravating factors into account and make a clear eyed decision about where we want to move forward, knowing that our peers may disagree with with where we are individually. But collectively, I think that makes the process stronger. Thank you. Um, let's do a couple more questions and then we'll get ready for our next session. Uh, Dr. Cor.
So not so much of a question, but answering your question, I'll with be, uh, you know, not speaking for the board, but myself uh, following up on um, President Haley's remarks, when cases are consolidated, especially when the the folks being accused of something did not want them to be consolidated, I think is an extremely poor practice, uh, speaking for myself. Um, and secondarily, um, close votes, split votes, um, are are the ones that I pay attention to, right? If if something's unanimous, you know, full disclosure, I'm probably not even reading it, right? Um, but those split votes and then, you know, watching the the tapes, if you will, often it's the minority um, that I find a compelling argument. So that's for B what would draw my attention. So um, and thank you for your service.
I just want to compliment the executive director for arranging this. In my previous eight year stint, there was no such presentation. And I saw cases where the majority of the board, in my opinion, unwisely overruled the P PAC and imposed their own uh, results. And um, I thought if there'd been a presentation like this, that would not have happened. So I I just want to compliment you for arranging this.
Member Kryvikus.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just want to echo uh, Member Cor's comments, especially about the split decisions. Those are the ones that probably are the hardest.
Dr. Hagerman.
Sorry, one last thing. I I think what Daniel just said was interesting is is that guidance, when there's a split decision, I think the tendency for the the ones in the minority have better explanations and sometimes everyone voting agreement don't necessarily explain as much. And so that might be an area of feedback, especially if that's going to the the that the that group then that person comes to the call. If we see more clarity around the the majority vote, that might be helpful.
Yeah, that's that's been my experience. The majority vote typically, yeah. They'll they'll say, well, I'm in the majority, so I need to explain my vote. And that that's common. So I think that's good feedback. We can
Absolutely.
take back.
Um, Member Katniss.
I just I just want to say thank you for everything that you all do. Um, it's a necessary part of, you know, public education to have people that are protecting our kids, our families, this profession. And um, just like the very first meeting that I ever had uh, during this process, I went home and I was like very upset because it is so emotional and you guys do so much of this. And I think if you're in education, your mind has to be thinking that there's always like the ability to to like get on the right track and there always is the ability to like uh, to better yourself because those are what make good teachers. And you know, you don't want a teacher that just looks at a kid and says, writes him off and says, you're never going to amount to anything. And and so I think that that especially is even harder in your position that you have to be impartial and take all these facts, but you have to do it with with your heart. And you have to do it with your mind and you have to do it with the intent that um, what is happening is for the betterment of education for all kids and for the protection of all kids. And that's that's so important. And so your role is extremely vital and important and and all of us respect and admire you. And so um, we just want to say thank you uh, for everything that you do and uh, it does not go uh, acknowledged to like, we understand how important your role is. But I know as a teacher, I always look at a kid in my class that you know, messes up one day and the next day you have to come back in and say, you can do this, bud, like you got this. And so I think that that's the hard part about this is that you want to believe that someone that's coming up here that had, you know, a mistake with with, you know, a past of something that they can do better, but it's also like, what is the right choice for education? And so that's that's why I I agree, this is the hardest part of any meeting. And I mean, the first the first time I I just, I was emotional and I like went home and I was like, I don't want to be a part of this anymore. Uh, so so I I'm very grateful for you.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for your time. We're really grateful for your service. Thank you. Um, do we need to take a five minute break or do folks want to do a rolling? If you need to use the restroom. Okay, well, let's take a five minute break and then um, and then we'll get move on to item five.
Oh my goodness. Awesome. Well, um, the presentations we've had today have been fantastic. We're, um, now ready to move on to item five, Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Uh, up next, uh, we have a presentation on school finance. You know, as we know, the board has the authority to place school districts, uh, to bring school districts forward for hearings that may result in receivership. There are three other options as well. Uh, this is obviously a responsibility the board takes very seriously and was prevalent this year. Uh, with both Isaac School District and Antelope Union High School District, uh, currently in receivership. So we are, uh, very thankful to have Chris Brown, the new CFO, relatively new CFO, uh, of A D E here to present. And then we have some great folks from ASBO, uh, to follow Chris to talk about resources for schools. Chris.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn and members of the board. Hello again. For those of you who haven't met me, my name is Chris Brown. I'm the chief financial officer. I'm just going to wait for them to get the presentation up and then we can get rolling. But today, uh, I'm going to go over some of the foundational elements of, uh, school finance. This is going to be a very high level, mostly basic information to just make you proficient or quite frankly, dangerous enough to start understanding the terms and the discussions that happened or tend to happen in the public limelight very quickly. There will be a little bit of intermediate information, but in the future, if there are specific topics you want to explore more, uh, the department's more than happy to, uh, and thank you for sharing that, more than happy to present on those, those topics. So today, uh, we're going to go over, as I mentioned, the basics. We're going to talk a little bit about average daily membership or what we call A D M as an acronym. You hear it probably all the time. It's probably one of the most used terms in public education in the state of Arizona. Uh, we're going to go over a concept of weights or funding weights. This is the bread and butter of how the, the finance system works, generally getting most of the state aid out to, uh, districts and charters. Uh, I'm going to use the term districts from now on just to encompass all educational organizations, just because I don't want to repeatedly say districts and charters over and over. Uh, we're going to briefly go over the types of payments that go out to the districts. And, uh, there's some other information in there too, just to give you, uh, some, and, uh, other sources of payments and funding that goes to districts. Uh, this is not all encompassing. There's actually other sources that will be highlighted in these slides, but don't go into detail. For example, like teacher experience index and so forth. It's just to raise awareness of what it is at a basic, in a basic nutshell, but not go into it detail in this presentation. This will more focus on data-driven submissions for student data and student, uh, in generation of dollars based on that student data. So we're also going to talk about some of the school finance reports, particularly the, the primary budget reports that districts will utilize. Some of this information you see will be districts only. It won't be as pertinent to charters. But the concept is still more or less the same and, and most of the processes. Uh, I'd like to scale this presentation to, uh, districts because they tend to have the most robust involvement with school finance. Uh, for example, like transportation is also a relevant factor for them, whereas for charter schools it is, it is not. Uh, going to briefly go over some of the monitoring that the state does or doesn't do, and who may be responsible for different aspects of monitoring certain reports, whether it's budget or annual financial reports. Uh, there's going to be just a brief touch on single audit, which is used for federal funds. Uh, in the grand scheme of the funding landscape, federal funds is actually pretty small compared to what the state pays out for education. Uh, and the standard funding, funding formulas. Uh, I'm not going to throw around percentages because quite frankly, the percentage scales significantly, whether you include just basic state aid or if you're going to also include every other revenue source that exists out there known to man at a county or local level. So. Um, and then finally to highlight and I think segue to, uh, I think Karen's also presenting from Heidfeld and Meach, talking about the resources that we share with the field and that you're more than welcome to look at. Uh, that segments, uh, how school finance provides support to the field. So at a basic level, uh, data that is collected from districts throughout the state and is used to calculate the eight billion in state funding. Uh, primarily goes through what we call the Arizona Education Data Standard System, or a lot of people call it just A Z eds. Uh, it's a very common term that I think now every district and charter school and other organizations are well aware of. Uh, and from the student data, we get what average daily membership or what you saw on the original slide is A D M. And this in turn will also be used to assign weightings for group B funding. Group B funding is specifically being called out now because it's a significant funding that multiplies the amount of dollars that specific children can generate. So we're going to go over some of the weightings of funding, but group B is particularly unique in that it is individually student specific. As I mentioned before, some of the other, um, elements of data that we use to give funding to districts across the state, we have employee data, which is used for teacher experience index. Uh, that's another supplemental source of funding for the field and particularly transportation data. So for mileage routes, number of students being transferred is, is given to the department by districts. And it helps provide, uh, financial support to what we call transportation support level. While this isn't relative to charters, it's extremely important for districts. Uh, and it's actually one of the most challenging ones for districts to submit to the, uh, department accurately to ensure they get the appropriate funding support for it. Uh, and for general context, district and charter, we call it equalization payments. They're made monthly to all the educational organizations. So if you see, uh, you'll see in future slides, there's going to be payments one, two, or if you say payment five, that's based on a fiscal year. So payment one would be July, payment two would be August, et cetera. I just want to give that preface because you're going to see later and payment one and two might not make sense if you've never understood the, the banding of, of fiscal year. So some of the additional funding elements that exist in the state, we have, for example, 200 day calendars. Most schools will operate on 180 calendar days. There's also the option to operate 144 calendar days, but there's also a 200 calendar day, which will give you uh, a slight multiplier of how much A D M you can generate. So basically the premise is if you operate more calendar days and you're providing education, you get a slight funding boost because of that. Uh, there's also other assistances called district additional assistance and charter additional assistance, which is based off of A D M to a degree. There's more information on that in the future slide. Uh, classroom site fund, we're going to dip into just a tad and instructional improvement fund. And finally, beyond all of these main sources that we're going to talk about today, everybody probably on this panel knows that there's federal funds, um, and knows also go to school districts and charters as relevant to the federal grants they're eligible for or they want to participate in. So what is average daily membership? Uh, and if you asked that question five years ago, it would have been drastically different than what's presented today. The formula has been simplified to a degree, uh, and it is the total number of days the student is enrolled within the first 100 days of the instructional calendar. An additional consideration does include the F T or full-time enrollment status of the student, uh, the enrollment and withdrawal date, and whether the child is concurrently enrolled. So what does this mean? Um, and, and just for context, as a disclaimer, 200 day calendars technically has 200 in that bottom fraction, but very few districts and charters do that in the state of Arizona. So I'm going to ignore that in future discussions, but for most intents and purposes, pretty much every single district does 100 day. Uh, the full-time enrollment status is how long is the child enrolled? You can just, for simplified terms, throughout the week and the day that they're receiving instruction. If they only are in half day, the F T would be point five. If they're full day, they get a one. Um, the fraction does go off of 0.25, 0.5, 0.75 and one under, uh, normal terms. So, and then for concurrent enrollment, this is important because in the state of Arizona, given school choice and, and other factors, children can be enrolled in multiple campuses at the same time. Uh, and then we have a process called limiting. So if the child is reported as a one F T E in both campuses, uh, they will then get fractioned down to point five, point five. I am being very simplified with that example. Um, there's actually a lot of nuances with that.
Just a quick question for that. So if, let's say I'm enrolled in my neighborhood high school, but I'm also taking classes at my local C T E D. Would that be, would there be a division there? So I would be full-time in my high school and full-time in the C T E D?
President Haley, that, uh, that whole calculation is slightly different.
Oh.
Because the same limiting doesn't happen. I would actually probably do that in the different presentation because the whole nuance of C T E D and satellite campuses, et cetera, has its own specific rules depending upon how it runs. So, yes, sir.
Can I take just a slightly?
By all means.
Variation. So, um, uh, half the day at the high school, half the day at the local community college that is not submitting this. Is that a full-time F T E for the high school or do they get limited?
Dr. Core, I'm going to have to do the same exact.
Fair enough.
Yeah. If we go down, I'm, I'm just giving you this there. If we go down this, there's a lot of special rules to explain. And, um.
Yeah.
And I do know we want to keep high levels.
Yeah, no, fair enough.
Yeah, my apologies. Hoping to catch me? Um, and so regarding A D M weights, uh, for school funding. So when the concept is, is that, uh, and we're going to work backwards is that A D M is just a, a number in and of itself. One, 1.5, 0.5, the average daily membership of students, uh, throughout the whole educational organization. So if you say you have 535.5, it means that's the average daily membership of all the students in the first 100 days of enrollment. Now what happens is, is there's also an aspect where that number will be multiplied. And that's where the concept of weighted A D M comes in. So for example, grade level will multiply that number. That multiplication doesn't necessarily mean it'll go up. It can also go down in certain cases. Uh, it, it will look also, there's, uh, the size of the school and isolated status. And I do have slides to, to go over these briefly. We also have group B categories, which most individuals will recognize as, uh, special education disability categories. But there's also some other elements in that group B, um, such as free and reduced and, uh, E L. So the total weight M that is generated for students or a campus is then multiplied against something we call the base level amount. This is the flat dollar amount that pretty much acts as the name says, it's the base. So if you have, uh, 535 A D M, you're going to take 535 and you're going to multiply it by that $5,000. That will be the payment given to the school. So in, in a nutshell, if you're regular or unfiltered, I'm just going to say unfiltered A D M is 100, but after weight it equals 500, you will get that 500 times that 5,000, $5,100. That is the premise of how the whole system works. Now there's, we're going to dive into a couple of weights. There's some other nuances with these, but these are the primary three that most of the field should recognize, uh, once they start working in, uh, their school finance departments in their own LEAs. So the group, the concept of group A weights is these are general weights provided by a grade. Uh, and it's used for, uh, support services and programs to school districts and charters. So it's not child specific. The concept is, is every child will generate this based on the grade and program on the potential that you're going to provide these support services as a whole to your campus. So, uh, this has confused the field in the past, particularly around, um, students with disabilities because they think there's an individual flag for, let's say, specific learning disability for children marked in A Z eds for their campus. That is not the case. This is given for all children to provide those support programs. Um, it does include career exploration, so it's not just students with disabilities, bilingual remedial education, et cetera. And as I mentioned before, um, there is, this is all driven by statutory, uh, formulas. So if you see the base plus the group A weight, that gives you the weighted count that you would multiply your A D M for that specific program or grade span. I will show you a report later that kind of breaks it down in like a single page. It's, it's probably going to look overwhelming to this room, but the districts will recognize it very, very quickly. Now, group B weights, this is actually for specific children. So if you have a specific child that is enrolled point five A D M approximately, uh, they would also get this weight added on to them for additional funding support. So I want to be clear, like if the child also has developmental delay in that bottom left corner where it says 0.292, we're not chopping the funding for the child. This is on top of the standard formula. This is like an add-on weight. Uh, as you can see, some of the funding weights there are very, very high. So for example, I believe right now students with autism will generally on average, if the child generates one full A D M, would probably give around 42 to about $50,000, give or take. Um, and depending upon the grade and the status of the school, et cetera. So. Next we have the small school district weights. Uh, this formula is actually somewhat variable and complex depending upon the number of students in a specific size for districts. Uh, there's a weighting factor there, but if you looked at the thresholds, it's 100 students and less than 500. So you see 100 to 499, 500 to less than 600, there's another weighting factor. So the item in parentheses is the variable there of that student count within that range. But the point is here is that depending upon whether you're in elementary or a high school district and you, if you have an isolated status, you will also get another specific weight to your education organization or your district specifically. Um, isolated status is listed there. There's no school within 30 miles of another district or if road conditions and terrain make the driving slow or hazardous, uh, in 15 miles. So. So we're going to transition to, uh, payments. So the basic state aid, uh, pretty much the funding is overwhelmingly spent on employee salaries, benefits, services, supplies and property expenditures. So most of the expenditures for school districts and, and charters pretty much in kind to a reasonable degree, ignoring transportation. Uh, the vast majority is spent on salaries, benefits, service, supplies and property expenditures. There is a much smaller portion spent on transportation. Uh, there are expenditures that may not be as phased forward, um, potentially school lunch programs. I know that was specifically earmarked as a note, uh, but overwhelmingly it's spent on the top bullet there. The funding is used from basis, uh, funding from basic state is used either in what we call M and O, maintenance and operations or unrestricted capital outlay. Unrestricted capital outlay would be your capital purchases such as, uh, buying a new building, uh, large land purchases, so forth. Uh, there's four components to, uh, what we call the equalization base. That's another term. And actually to be specific, the top three bullets in that is the equalization base. The qualified tax levy from, comes from the county. So I'll go over this from top to bottom. So we have our weighted A D M plus adjustments, the base support level that you saw earlier. We have transportation payments that go to districts. And then we also have the district or the charter additional assistance. For the example of the district additional assistance, it uses the prior year A D M. That goes to what we call equalization base. That is what the state pays the district. And then districts can also have qualified tax levies which come from the counties. I hope you have. I hope you have no questions on that because that is a whole different presentation in of itself. It's extremely, extremely difficult. I'm sure Dr. Clay is well aware of that. So, um, the report I mentioned earlier, so how do we bring this all together for districts? So there is a report called the Basic State Aid Report, we call it the BSA 55. I know it's a little small in the font, but in the top, this is the very first page of the report, it is five pages. On the first page of the report, it basically shows in that top one-third, the ADM that's unweighted and then the weighted ADM for the district by grade level and between AOI and non-AOI, because AOI has a slightly different fraction in that whole grand scheme. Then in the bottom part of that same page, you're now adding Group B weights to that. So it gives a full picture perspective for that district of, hey, where did you start at with your ADM? What's the initial weights? Then what's your Group B weights? That number in that bottom right corner, or some of it's chopped off, excuse me, but below that row in that first page is actually, it just adds up the totals to be used for ADM to dollars. So you have your total weighted ADM, this is for Phoenix Union, by the way. So as I mentioned, you have your regular weighted ADM in that very top section where it says calculation for base support level. You have your Group B add-on, which is from the prior page, which gives you the total ADM. There's an AOI funding factor. Students in AOI, if they're full-time, they get .95 credit of funding, credit of funding, I'm using that term generally. And if they're part 10, they get .85, which in turn gives you basically a total weighted ADM to be funded on. Then if you see in the yellow there, you're going to take it and multiply it against the base support level. And now you're looking at how much dollars are going to start going to districts. That is the premise in a nutshell of ADM and the funding formula that is pretty important to all the districts across the state and charters. So briefly, Classroom Site Fund, which is another payment system or, excuse me, payment process to districts and charters across the state. We have, uh, this is based on the state sales tax or comes in from the state sales tax. It's apportioned on the ADM for school districts and charters statewide. CSF money can be used on now a variety of purposes. I believe it used to be more limited years ago. But it's really primarily used for class size reduction, teacher compensation, assessment intervention programs, teacher development dropout prevention programs, teacher liability insurance premiums, and student support services. Student support services, I think, was the item that was added a few years ago, which expanded the use of this fund. We also have the Instructional Improvement Plan. This is commonly referred to as IIF throughout the state. This comes from Indian Gaming Revenue. It's also allocated on ADM, ADM-based statewide proportional basis. Up to 15% of this fund may be used for teacher compensation increases and class size reduction. So districts in, uh, pay particularly close attention to this fund. The remaining monies must be used for the following maintenance and operation purposes. It can be used for dropout prevention programs, instructional improvement programs, including programs to develop minimum reading skills for students by the end of third grade. So, Yes, I believe so. I don't believe this is a restrictive use of the fund. So other informational, just for context, earlier we mentioned district additional assistance. This is unique in that it is significantly different for ADM compared to charter additional assistance. But then again, one has to also remember that charter schools don't generate any transportation funding. So it's not quite apples to apples and there's different costs in general between the organizations. But for district additional assistance, it's approximately $550 to $600 based on the prior year ADM. However, charter additional assistance, about $2,100 to $2,500, but it's based on the current year ADM. So there's a slight difference of which ADM is used in that equation. Other thing to note, Classroom Site Fund payments are made separately and on a monthly cycle. So they're not actually made with the same basic state aid that is issued. It's made separately. It might occur around the same time, but doesn't necessarily have to be one in the same. Instructional improvement funds, those payments are made twice a year along with the supplemental state aid. So if there's any other supplemental state aid that comes, those payments are made twice a year to educational organization as needed. Supplemental state aid is a whole different can of worms to expand upon, but compared to the grand, what's being presented today, it's not one of the main focuses. One of the things that we do want to notate is that since we haven't hit the 100th day for most school districts until October, November, December, and even then I'm being generous. What happens is, is that estimated counts for charters is used in the first and second payments for those organizations. So there's a process called Charter Estimated Counts. There's a whole pseudo-calculation that happens. They will get those payments until the third payment comes along and then it will actually start using current year data to a more exact measurement. Instead of Charter Estimated Counts, districts actually use their prior year ADM for the first two payments until it then kicks over to current year ADM. So on some of the budget reports that are important to the districts and particularly department, the Budget 25 report. So what this does is this compares the current budget or the current submitted budget by the district to ADE calculations for the current fiscal year. So this sets the MNO and unrestricted capital outlay fund budgetary limits. It's generated monthly and it helps the district keeps track of what their expected budget limits are. So this is largely based on student data. So the ADM and the transportation revenue control limit. And if a lot of these terms don't quite make sense, there's a whole can of worms in kind of outlining these. The important part about this report is the district should be looking at this throughout the year to ensure they're leaving no money on the table when the year ends. There's another report I'm going to get to shortly that's going to look that their actual expenditures match their budget, et cetera, and if they basically overexpend it. So there are other components allowed by statutes to add to the revenue control limit to create what we call a total limit that the district can potentially budget or carry over. So to partner with this, there's the Budget 75 report. Now this compares the actual expenditures done by the district for the previous fiscal year to the budget. This will calculate a budget balance carryover value for MNO and the unrestricted capital outlay based on the actual expenditures the district did. More or less, the takeaway here is this will help establish a list of districts that have over expended in the prior year after they have submitted their annual financial reports. So there's two main reports the department looks at. And I believe we're coming up to it, yes. The two, I'm going to skip to the bottom of this. So the two reports that's particularly important to our department is a submitted budget from a district or a charter and what we call the annual financial report, how they expended money for a school year that ended. There are statutory deadlines for when they have to have these submitted to the department. Budgets pretty much, uh, while there is proposed, the only budgets we will consider are those which have actually been approved by boards, whether it's a charter or a district. So the role of school finance is we do collect current year estimated budgetary expenditures or annual financial reports and prior year finalized actual expenditures, AFRs. So, um, budgets in AFRs more or less is what we collect. Now, to be clear though, ADE does not audit these reports. We are just the collection mechanism and we look at the basic validation. Hey, did you give us letters where a number's at? Did you give us a negative number where it shouldn't exist? Things like that. Districts and charters are expected to undergo their own annual and bi-annual audits conducted by an external firm. Those auditors will be doing the actual audits on the budgets and annual financial reports. As in, how did you populate this information? Did you report it with valid, uh, in a valid manner to the department? If auditors do discover findings, uh, those respective organizations are required to submit revised documentation to the department. Now, we do share any board-approved budgets and board-approved AFRs for the public. There's a public-facing website on the school finance webpage. Now, what does ADE track? What do we actually pay very close attention to? And what should the districts pay very close attention to? Well, it's probably no surprise to anybody, it's ADM fluctuations. School finance pays, I would argue, daily, if not weekly, very close attention to every LEA's ADM. If there is a significant drop in all the ADM disappears and a payment goes out, we may actually be in circumstances where we're taking money back from districts. So they take measures to prevent that. If they think there's a data quality issue and the ADM plummets, there are ways to rectify that and reconcile it, reconcile it in a temporary manner and eventually address it by the end of the year. So while we pay very close attention to that, we also encourage districts and charters pay very close attention to your own ADM, probably daily, but at least once a week. Yes, Carl? Yes, Carl? So remember, correct this, uh, the ADM is processed every night. Districts and charters submit, uh, quite frankly, daily, if not more than once a day. I mean, there's a lot of districts which will submit continuously throughout the day. Yeah. Smaller charters and smaller districts might submit once every couple of days, but even then it's pretty uncommon. So educational organizations, they should be monitoring their Budget 25 report. As I mentioned earlier, they really want to make sure that there's no leftover budget capacity left on the table. So when we get budgets from districts and our own calculations, we actually look at what the budget limit should be for that district. And we look to want to make sure that they reconcile and by the end of the year that there's no budget left on the table. So single audit, this will, this will just be a basic touch base to it. So this applies to all non-federal entities. While it's primarily governmental units, it does require a nonprofit status, particularly in the education domain, that expands 750,000 or more, but now it's $1 million as of recent, October 1, 2024, in federal awards. So this can be grants or loans or a variety of other mediums. But if they exceed, they being the educational organization exceeds $1 million, between all those federal sources, they're required to, um, more or less get a single audit. So the additional requirements of a single audit, uh, it looks at all of the auditees' federal awards. It looks at the compliance requirements of federal grants in general. It looks at the compliance with laws and regulations over the major federal programs. So for example, uh, it is not uncommon that Title I or special education grants get audited to a much higher degree than any other program, pretty much once every two years, including our own state department, it's the same, same issue. And then finally, there are also a relevant factor here is the report on a schedule of expenditures of federal awards. We call this the Sifa, but this basically is, uh, a report that an educational organization submits to the federal government of every single federal grant they got, et cetera, expenses. So moving to the training and support part, so there's three areas of school finance that are primarily for the support. And the three areas that are structured, uh, we have payments, we have a budget team, and we have what we call analysts or data and operations. So I'm going to move from the bottom to the top bullet here. The analyst, the data and operations deals with, are you getting data to the department? Is your data passing what we call business rules or integrity? Do you have any systemic issues getting data to the department? The budget team looks primarily at the budgets and the submitted annual financial reports to make sure we're collecting them from the field, those are all processing correctly because those values in those actual submissions from districts and charters are consumed in the department for other various programs to do calculations on, et cetera. And then finally, payments, are we actually getting payments to districts and charters throughout the, throughout the state, basically, for each of the different sources? Whether it's, uh, the state aid, Classroom Site Fund, or the Instructional Improvement Fund, et cetera. Each of these areas, and I'll show you a screenshot, they do have their own guidelines, manuals, they have their own training hubs. They do a variety of, I would say, monthly, if not weekly, check-ins, trainings, depending upon the topic. And it's structured and catered to a variety of different staff in larger districts. Smaller districts, of course, you're probably going to have one person talking to the school finance individuals across the whole gamut. But in a lot of large districts, uh, the person who does the data submissions, or we call them registrars at school districts will not be the same person submitting the budget in the annual financial reports. So we've had to structure the trainings in a more compartmentalized approach for the general state at large. And each of, I know it's a little hard to see here, but each of those boxes are relevant to the three domains I talked about, budget, operations, and the payments. On top of just the training materials, there's also forums, past presentation, past memos that the department's actually issued, uh, even memos that are no longer active just to show if there was a legislative change, if you want to look at the history of how things were processed in the department. Finally, this is the contact information. This is how it's shared with the field. We have three, uh, unique and distinct options or segments of the main general's phone line that exists for school finance. Uh, I'm not going to repeat the payments budget aspect, but, uh, in here, we actually give the field of what are some of the examples of when you would call option one, option two, or option three. Each of them, just to be clear, also has numerous email inboxes that are focused on different things. So like school finances, SF analyst team. So that way, uh, there's a common inbox that can be used, but you're not just dumping into school finance in a hole. It's actually targeted to whether it's payments or whether it's data related, et cetera. Just some two final notes, I want to give a lot of appreciation to the school finance team and particularly, uh, I'm going to introduce Sheen, who's actually the school finance administrator. She's more of the brains to this. For those of you who remember, she's pretty much the new Lyle Friesen in the department. I would like to say I was, but now she, she definitely just circles around me. But she did a lot to help give me information on this. And also the wonderful Karen, who will be presenting shortly. I had some conversations with her and she helped me just refresh my memory on a lot of this information. I've included Sheen in my information and, uh, yeah.
So President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, wanting to provide this information, but also wanting to give schools somewhere to go next. We have invited a couple of folks from ASBO who are going to share their resources. How about we have them come up and share and then we can do questions? So Karen and Jim?
For whom? Executive Director Ross, just a quick question. Since we are recording this meeting, will Chris's presentation be clipped so we can watch it at a later time?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, every presentation today is clipped, is going to be clipped, thank you Shannon, in advance. And, um, uh, will be available to board members and to the field.
Great, good morning. President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Just as a matter of introduction, I am Jim McGlerino. I am the executive director of the Arizona Association of School Business Officials, or commonly referred to as ASBO. Full disclosure, I'm seven weeks on the job. So I brought some help. But just a little bit about my history, I have more than three decades as a school business official in the state of Arizona. I started in a small rural district in the state. And my, my last, uh, job just eight weeks ago was I finished my career at the Deer Valley School District as the Deputy Superintendent of Fiscal and Business Services. And I have with me Ms. Karen Smith. Because one of the things that ASBO does is we partner with folks for, you know, some of the best practices that, that we can provide to our members. And Karen is renowned as the, as recognized as one of the experts on school finance in the state of Arizona. I'm going to go through just a little bit about ASBO, the association itself, and then she'll talk about some of the professional development opportunities that we have and, and what we do as an organization. All right, uh, I think it's important to note that ASBO, although we are a statewide organization, we are a nonprofit, uh, so we're not a government, uh, governmental entity. We, you know, we generate our revenue from, uh, membership and from the, uh, the expense of the, of the opportunities that we offer our members. But we are a nonprofit, but not associated with, with, with a government, um, at, you know, as the state of Department of Education is. It has been an organization of volunteers, it has been that way for decades. It got, grew to the point back in the late 90s. It grew to the point back in the late 90s where we actually had to have a professional presence in a building. We now have a staff of five, including myself. But we are governed by a 15-member volunteer board that actually serves to provide the guidance for the organization itself. And here's what the mission is. So we really are focused on creating high standards of school business management and providing quality training and cultivating the professional stature of our members. That's really what our motivations are. And this is how we do it. All right. So we have professional development opportunities that include on-demand learning, so that can be done self-paced. We have academies that are very specific and targeted groups, and we'll talk about these in a little more detail. Well, actually, I'll let the expert do that. We have bimonthly meetings. We have six of those a year. Workshops or classes, these are very specific, usually one-day sessions. Conferences are large events that we host where we get very specific on topics and usually very timely topics. Those are generated by a professional development committee and which has multiple track chairs for various disciplines within the school business operation that develop those topics. We also have a digital community forum that allows for interaction for people, usually through email communication and other sharing of information. And then we also offer a comparative analytics tool in a partnership with a third-party vendor that allows districts to be able to look at their data and compare it to either peers or state information. And that is for a fee, I should mention, but it is something that is available to our members. Again, a lot of these are available in multiple modes, so virtual options, in-person options, and then again, the on-demand learning. And then just as a bonus, many of you might recognize the name Dr. Chuck Essex. He provides Chuck's updates. We do a newsletter that's referred to as The Edge, and we also publish something called the School Finance Manual. Those all come as part of the cost of the membership. But many of the other opportunities, there is a small fee for participating in those. But we do also offer scholarships options. We recently received a very generous donation. And so our membership committee actually reviews scholarships. So anybody that has a need or wants to attend one of our events has the opportunity to be also scholarshiped if need be. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Smith.
Okay, as Jim mentioned, my name is Karen Smith, and I have the best job in the state because I get to work with school districts and forms of government across the state in my capacity. So I am nearing that 30-year mark. I'm closer to 30 than 25 years now. As I look at my career in school district leadership, school finance. I work with Heinfeld Meach. You might recognize that name. We're a public accounting firm that we work in both the consulting and auditing capacity. As I said, my job is the best job because I'm a consultant. I'm not an auditor. But I get asked a lot of audit questions, so I have the privilege of being in this professional development partnership with ASBO and helping facilitate a lot of the professional development opportunities that are provided to its membership and to really the whole school finance, school business officials community. And one of the roles that I play is to help facilitate a lot of these trainings, either by personally delivering these trainings, helping guide the curriculum, but also working with the cadre of presenters that we have. So this is just a quick rundown of some of the different types of presenters that we have and all those different opportunities that Jim mentioned. Between the on-demand workshops, the in-person workshops, the cohorts that we offer, the bimonthly meetings, the conferences. It is made up of our community, our school business community. So it is sitting, existing, seasoned school business professionals. We have state leaders. We have the Department of Education team, the Auditor General's Office, the School Facility Board, the Attorney General's Office, various different agencies that partner with us in both workshops, conferences, bimonthly meetings. We have attorneys who come in because, as we know, Title 15 used to be this big and you know, my hand doesn't stretch that far, even if I was Kobe Bryant with huge hands, I don't think I would be able to get my hands across Title 15 right now, just because there is a lot to understand. So having school attorneys available to us, of course, the auditors, consultants, and also ASBO has a number of strategic vendor partners who are able to provide not just content information, but also partnership opportunities to provide a lot of these opportunities that we have through the ASBO program at a minimal cost to our members. So the presentations kind of come from all sectors. A little bit about some of those different areas that Jim mentioned as far as the professional development opportunities. I'm going to kind of delve into each of these. So one that is very timely and very relevant to our school business community across the state are our on-demand learning opportunities. This is a program that ASBO launched a couple of years ago. And what this allows for is pre-recorded on-demand workshops that are available to the school district membership, and it's a very minimal cost of a $500 per year organizational cost, which means Washington School District, with however many schools, can participate at $500 for the entire organization. That means you can have every school secretary, every principal, every account tech, every single person in the organization watch a training on travel requirements, on procurement requirements, on capital assets, on all of the different areas that we have available. So it's intended to be able to provide that overview of the compliance requirements in those different areas, but also be flexible to whatever that school district needs are from a timing perspective. You can watch it as a group in a meeting, or you can watch it individually to refresh your own skill set. So the idea of it being on-demand is really just unlimited access to the school community. We also have the academies that Jim mentioned. So currently, ASBO has three different tracks, if you will, for these academies, and you can see that these are our longer durations. The idea of these are built on a cohort model so that the individuals who are participating in these cohorts are not just coming to learn the content, but also form those relationships. I facilitate the Aspiring School Business Officials Academy. We are in our fifth cohort right now. It is a extensive investment for both the individual as well as the school district in which the individual is coming from. Because they join for 15 months, they come every month for 15 months, and we spend time really delving into not just the current topics, but everything that crosses the desk of the the school business operations. We have the WELDS Academy. That is our Women's Executive Leadership Development Series. That is a nine-month cohort, also a very extensive commitment for the individuals to really build a lot of that internal leadership, that focusing on leadership topics, again, building that cohort so you can form those relationships so that you have a phone-a-friend in your career. You have a phone-a-friend for that that long-term investment in your professional development. And we also have a partnership with the Trust. The Trust is the Arizona School Risk Retention Trust that provides liability insurance for a large number of the school districts in the state. And that is a leadership academy. While it's a little bit shorter in duration, it is much deeper into a deep dive of that leadership growth and really helping in that management, risk management perspective for the district administration. So with these different groups, you'll see the Aspiring School Business Officials Academy will have a combination of maybe some of those newer folks coming into school business operations, or maybe within the first couple of years. As you can see in the name, it's meant to really build that foundational level where WELDS will be a good mix of seasoned school business officials as well as newer school business officials. And our Leadership Academy really delves into not just your school business officials, but superintendents, governing board members, facilities folks, you know, different individuals across the gamut of our school district leadership. Our next area is our bimonthly meetings. These are organized and facilitated by the Chuck Essex. So if you've not met Chuck Essex, and you know, for those who are listening, you know, if you just mention his name, you just say Dr. Essex, and everybody knows who you're speaking to. We've also referred to him as the godfather of school finance. So he truly is. In fact, this past spring, we were able to have our Secretary of State issue a proclamation to call Chuck's birthday, the, you know, Godfather of School Finance Day. So it was, if you haven't watched that bimonthly meeting, I encourage that. But these bimonthly meetings, they are offered in person. They are also available virtually, so you can log in virtually. They're also recorded, so you can watch them similar to these these meetings for the state board. If you're not able to attend on that particular day, you can watch these meetings. And these meetings, Chuck does an incredible job at putting together the agenda. He brings in various different guest speakers. So it's a membership meeting where there's just ASBO updates in general, but then there's always information packed with what do we need to know right now? What's going on on those relevant topics? We have standing agenda items on the compliance updates. What are some of the things that our school business officials need to know? We have a standing agenda item with the school finance team, the grants management team, the auditor general's office, the school facilities board. And again, you know, it's a full day of a lot of information that can be watched at any time from anywhere in the state. And you'll have people join from their phones when they're commuting between locations, as well as you know, popping in maybe for part of the meeting and listening to the recording for another part of the meeting. But those are offered throughout the year on a bimonthly basis. We have our workshops. As Jim mentioned, we have a number of different workshops that are provided. They're broken up primarily in three seasons. So right now, we're in the fall season. We'll branch into the winter season here in a few months, and then, of course, the spring. And within each season, we have anywhere from 15 to 20 different workshops that are offered. These are full-day deep dives. You can come learn everything you never wanted to know about capital assets, everything you wanted to know about the chart of accounts from accounting to, we have an upcoming AFR workshop. I know Chris was just speaking to those reports that school districts need to file. So all of these different areas are offered in a very in-depth, deep dive. There was just yesterday a budget and finance workshop that's part of a three-day series. That's the introductory, then we have an intermediate and advanced. So a number of our topics are offered in that way in which they're divided up throughout the year. So you come learn something, you go back and apply it, you come back and learn more, go apply it, and kind of that opportunity where it's not just kind of jam it all in in just a couple of days and expect to remember it all year long. It's intended to be broken up throughout the year. But throughout the year, we have anywhere from 30 to 40 different workshops that are offered. These are primarily in-person. We've dabbled with a little bit of the virtual hybrid approach, and we have some of those that have been offered. In fact, we've recorded some of those. So if you want to spend, you know, seven hours learning about the chart of accounts, you can listen to it. So, you know, we have definitely explored that, and ASBO is currently looking at some of the platforms that maybe we can do more of that because we know that is very popular. We've also offered some of these workshops. For example, just this past summer, we had a couple of workshops down in the Tucson area to try to provide some opportunities for the southern Arizona community as well. And then we also have, as Jim mentioned, our conferences. There are some primary conferences that ASBO hosts every year. We have the Winter Conference that is paired with a Vendor Buyer Conference. The Winter Conference coming up this winter, as the name implies, in January, which is paired with the Vendor Buyer Conference. The Winter Focus is on audit and compliance, so that's where we hit upon all the current state and federal issues, business and accounting, really around that area of compliance as well as procurement. Vendor Buyer is, as the name implies, it is for our buyers who are at the school district paired with our vendors. So that we can make sure our vendors understand what is it like to do business with a school district. So there are workshops specifically for vendors, understanding what is the RFP process, what is the bid process? How do you become a vendor with a school district? We have our Spring Conference that is offered in April of every year, and that has a number of different tracks that you can see from the list here and draws hundreds of people from across the state to be able to offer those different areas. And then our Annual Conference, which is the biggest conference, is held in July every year, and that's, oh, I should emphasize, Spring Conference is held in northern Arizona, the Summer Conference is held in southern Arizona, and the Summer Conference, I think this year we had over 1,000 people? Over 1,000 people at the Summer Conference, and again, just the cadre of different topics and presentations. Again, those presentations are facilitated by a number of different seasoned school business officials, as well as state agencies that are able to present, as well as some of our vendor partners who are providing some of the solutions for some of the different needs within our school districts. As Jim also mentioned, we also have our platform. So we call it the Community Platform. As Jim mentioned, you know, this is something that you can sign up to get those immediate emails when something is posted. It's more of like a bulletin board. If somebody has a question, hey, what do you know about the latest, you know, Gatsby pronouncement? You can post something there. And, you know, anybody who's part of that particular platform, or I should say that discipline, will get a notification that that question was posted. And if it's something I can answer, I can jump on and put a quick answer or put a link for more information. But it's meant to be kind of that bulletin board environment that really from any time of the day or from any location, you're able to post some of those questions. But you can see some of the other resources that are available on the ASBO website, Chuck's updates. You know, we constantly are posting the latest and greatest. All of the presentations that have been presented at conferences are available in the Presentation Archive, and then behind that, Members Only. That's where you'll find things like the quarterly newsletter that Jim mentioned that's provided, as well as the School Finance Manual that is updated every year based off of any of the statutory changes, the formula changes. Things like that would be available once the individual logs in through their membership. But you can see there's a lot of things that are on the front-facing portion of the website that you don't need to be a member to access just because of the intent of ASBO is really to push that information out there. So with that, I think we can open it up for any questions on School Finance 101, ASBO, and some of the professional development opportunities that are available.
So does anyone have any questions? Like Dr. Clay is up first. Go for it.
Okay, so Chris is looking at me like I know what she's going to ask. No, you don't. Not this time. Okay. As you know, all of you, we are having a lot of problems with finance, school finance in the rural schools. We have people who are so rural that they're not going to ASBO conferences. All right. And you'd find if you look in, if you look at our record, most of the schools that are having problems with the AG are our small schools. Because somebody's mother, sister, cousin is a finance, you know, it's the finance manager. So what we're trying to do is provide super-duper business manager 101 on the most primary level that you can find for this reason. We're going to have to shake the trees for the low-hanging fruit of anybody who even has the minds that you guys have, which is that black and white Excel spreadsheet number type of thing that makes my eyes water. There are people out there like you. All right, we need to find them, and that's a good thing. Okay? We need to find them. We need to give them in training. And right now, the training that you're offering, number one, is out of the range of, as far as funding or pay. But even, you know, I'm listening and looking at the training. We just need training where do you want to do this? Okay, that's what we're needing right now, and I'm working on it right now, but my goodness, wouldn't it be great if we can partner? So what we're doing, we're doing a finance. Do you want to be a finance person, you know? Trying to grow our own, because I'm going to tell you something, it's really, really bad. You may not notice it that much because, you know, you have all these people, but there are people that were dying on the vine. All right, so I'd like you to think about that. Finance manager 101, something that granny and somebody out of high school, or anybody who has, again, the temperance and the minds that finance people have, we need to find those people. So if you can help me out, and not only me, but all of the rural schools that, and there's no offense, they're getting finance managers from Phoenix, and they're charging a lot of money for these small schools. And not that they're not good, but they're not invested in the community. Do you understand? We need to get people trained homegrown in our communities so that we can continue this. So if you can get with me and help me out, please, I would appreciate it.
Well, do Member Kavikas and then Dr. Hightower.
I just want to thank you again for a great presentation. I kind of love school finance, even though I'm not a financial person, but the policy implications to all of that is the part that I love. But I want to dovetail on what Member Clay just talked about. I think that's an issue we've known about for decades. I think it's gotten worse, but finding quality people in the rural areas has been an issue. But one of the things that I've noticed But one of the things that I've noticed as we're talking more about districts in financial distress and potential receivership, and this is what concerns me the most, I'd love to pick your brains, is when the school board members, there seems to be a really big disconnect between what the school board members kind of knew all along the process. Even if there was really good school finance people, and I'm not saying that they're bad, I'm saying that they have them, right? That they have them in some of these rural areas, that the board members didn't feel like they really knew what was going on. So it feels like there's an information gap there that I'm really concerned that we start filling. Because, you know, of course, statutorily, they are the ones that have to make these decisions, right, for districts? But they don't always seem to have felt like they had their arms around what was happening. I'd love your thoughts on that.
Being, and Jim might have some commentary as well, having worked in a school district and work with school districts right now, and the importance, you're absolutely correct, the role of the, the governing board members, and how we can continue to educate school board members on even just this, you know, high level understanding of it. We do have statutory requirements to bring our budgets to the governing board for approval, to bring our annual financial report. We now have a requirement to bring our audit reports to the governing board. But do, does everybody understand that? When you put a spreadsheet in front of them with a two-point font, with all due respect to the budget forms, but yes, is that? And there's a lot of digits on there. What does that really mean? So how do we break that down? How do we present that in an understandable way? I, I was not born and bred in accounting. I'm a social worker, fell into school finance almost many three zero years ago. But I agree with you, you know, if you aren't somebody who, you know, went through to be an accountant, to understand some of this can be difficult. So how do we provide some of those trainings? How do we provide to the, the rural parts of the state, the basics, like you said? But then also the deep dive? Because as a school board member, you're responsible for not just understanding at a high level, but know what questions to ask, know what are some of those things that, that should be on the horizon? And how do you form that relationship with your, your leadership? And I say leadership because it's not just the business office, it's the superintendency. It's understanding what your community needs are, as well as what our parameters or our limitations are when we look at all the different funding sources. So that's a much bigger discussion on how do we get our arms around, you know, understanding school finance 101? And how much time do we have to invest in that? Because it's the, the foundation for us to be able to deliver instruction. And our, our focus is the, the quality of instruction, but we can't do it without the resources and we can't do it without understanding what those resources are. So I think that there is definitely opportunities. No one will argue that there's not opportunities to be able to educate across the, the spectrum of everybody who's involved in our, our public schools. And looking for these different means, ASBO is one of those membership organizations that provides that. We have other membership organizations between ASBA and ASA. And we all try to work together to try to hit some of those different targets, if you will, because we all kind of hear from different organizations of how can we make sure that messaging is consistent as well?
Oh, sorry, thank you. I love the way you framed that, because we all know who school board members are. I mean, constitutionally, they're average people who run, so are legislators for that matter. I always get the impression and having, you know, districts come before us during some really contested issues, they didn't even know what questions to ask. And so I would, and I'm guessing that you guys already do partnership with ASBO a lot. But it's like literally, what are the 10 questions you want to ask when that budget's in front of you on voting day? What are the things they should be looking at? Because it's one thing to understand how ADM is calculated, which is a lot for anybody. But it's not, it's a totally different thing to understand how that budget document in front of them. And I remember the first school board meeting I went to when I was young, it was like three oh years ago, right? And it was a binder like this big at a really big school district. How do they know how the, how these numbers connect to the policy decisions? And the policy goals and the strategic goals that the district wants to make? I feel like that sometimes is a disconnect too.
And, and that is, perhaps you're completely correct in how do you weave all that together? That how we're delivering that instruction? How are we funding that? What, you know, how do you bring all of that together so that our, our leaders can make those informed decisions? Yes.
So, uh, one of the things that Sheen and myself, and actually some of the other units on the operations side I've been looking at is restructuring, or at least providing somewhat a portal access from a parent point of view. And hear me out a little bit, because, you know, the district that my kid goes to, they, I remember they handed me a quick little sheet, you know, vote on the bond, right? And it's hard to really understand that. I mean, I understood what they were asking for, and it's literally looked like a bookmark. But I think if you, you can kind of address two things here to, to remember Krikis' Ficus' point about the, the board members tend to be parents and other common members of the public. If you can start bringing some of those items, like how does a federal grant work? How does school finance work at a parent face value? You may also be able to address your common person also wondering, do I really want to get into the realm of school finance potentially? And that is to make, I think, the public at large more proficient when talking to districts and charters. Because it can be a challenge for, at least particularly in my personal experience, it's been a challenge for the, the friends and families, members I know going to the school district. And they're like, yeah, so-and-so said this, this, and this. And I'm like, oh, I know exactly what they're talking about, but they had no idea. So, but that may also make it a little more welcoming for particularly to Dr. Clay's point about, does someone want to get into the profession? Because if you make the barrier so high and so technical, it's gonna be next to impossible, at least in rural areas. I'll make somewhat of an assumption there. Just my, my comments, but we are working on that right now to try to translate that and get it to be more, you could argue more parent-friendly or more public-friendly to explain. And I think make them proficient enough, kind of like the presentation I gave you today. Make them proficient enough to have the right questions to the districts and charter.
Time-wise, we need to move to the next agenda item. Is there any last questions, Dr. High Power and, and Dr. Clay?
Thank you so much, Dr. Hagerman. Thank you so much for the wonderful presentation and for your leadership in establishing the academies. There's a dire, dire need for school business officials, not just in the rural areas, but in the big cities as well. They cover a lot. They're not only covering school finance, they're covering transportation, food services, operations, maintenance. So they wear a lot of different hats. My question to you is, over the weekend, I read an article that two-thirds of our nation's public schools have declining enrollment. Districts are going to be faced with making some pretty tough decisions within the academies and within your trainings. Do you provide strategies for that CFO, board, superintendents, meet and confer groups, inner space negotiations in tackling those very difficult decisions that need to be made?
As, as the facilitator for the, the aspiring school business officials, I can speak to absolutely. We are, as I mentioned, we're together over a 15-month period of time and we build up to that entire budgeting process. So we spend four sessions towards the latter end of that 15 months, where we break into even smaller groups within that group of 40. So you have a group of five or six people. And it's, it's intentional that you've got a large district, a small district, a rural district. You know, a little bit more seasoned person, a brand new person, where we talk about, how do you plan for staffing? How do you plan for your budget? How do you, how do you do your enrollment projections? And we break down all of those different areas of budgeting and not just filling out the forms, but some of those different policy types of decisions, programmatic types of decisions. So that the idea is you, you brainstorm with the small group of what are all of your districts doing? Come back to the larger group, and then we not only share that, but then we document a lot of that. So there's a toolbox that everybody in that cohort, even if you weren't in that small group and you heard that ABC school district is doing X, Y, and Z, they post a lot of those resources. They post their, their staffing models. They will share with one another how they build their budget, how they present their budget to their board, to their community, different things like that. So ideally, when you leave that cohort program, not only did you listen and learn and obtain the presentations and things like that, but you also walk away with some of those tools that you can implement within your own district or modify depending upon the size of your district.
Um, Dr. Clay?
I just want to make a suggestion that we make a purposeful, we purposely meet together later. I just don't want this to die here. I have, and, and here, I, I hate to beat a dead horse, but I see it. It's, it's my world now. I have, I have board members, they've made a lot of bad, nasty mistakes. Some of them haven't even been surfaced yet, and they're ashamed and afraid to say anything because they didn't know any better. All right? And, and, and some of these school districts have been destroyed, maybe by people coming in, taking all their money, making all these rules implied, you know, whatever. And I, and I have a couple of them in my county now. And I said, why, why not go ahead and report this? They won't. They're ashamed. So my thing is this, I cannot stand looking at a situation and not doing something about it. So I'm asking you guys to help me, that we, we put our heads together and do something about it so that the field will know that there, somebody cares. Okay, thank you.
Member Kent Neese?
I'll make it quick. So I, I think that going through this information, one thing that I couldn't help but think about is I'm, I'm a teacher in the Isaac School District. And I think that sometimes as teachers, you sort of assume that everybody like that's leading your district like knows everything. And you just kind of put your blind trust in your leadership and your board, et cetera. And so I'm wondering also just a question that maybe to think about too. How can we also educate other stakeholders in the school system? Whether it's teachers, whether it's other workers in the school system about the school finances and about district finances? So that if they do realize something, like they can also like kind of help with the process as well? Because, I mean, I, speaking for myself, I put a lot of trust in, you know, people that were above me. And I think that if I would have understood this more as a teacher, I probably would like want to do something.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it. We are now moved to item six, Executive Director Ross.
Vice President Hagerman, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. As will become a tradition at every board retreat, we're gonna have an overview of open meeting law from our assigned Assistant Attorney General, Joe Kada is here to talk to us about open meeting law. Joe? It is, it's a, yeah, we're kicking, kicking one off.
See, we are officially in afternoon time, so good afternoon, members of the board. So I'm here for the next four hours to talk to you about open meeting law. No, no, I, I kid, so we'll, we'll, we'll give you a, a quick primer, 30 minutes or less. So, let's see, right, does this, does this get me through? Okay, all right. Okay, so, um, so my name is Joe Kada, and I'm the Chief Counsel of the Education Unit at the Attorney General's Office. And I am the Board of Education's assigned Attorney General, Assistant Attorney General. So let's, let's embark on the wonderful journey that is the open meeting law. Okay, so, uh, there's a couple of things that just underscore why we have this law. And a lot of this is stuff that you already know, particularly those of you that have been on the board for a while now, or just a member of any kind of public boards, a school district governing board, et cetera. But what, what really underscores the, the whole purpose of the open meeting law is just these key points here. Public access, transparency, accountability. And so on the slide here, we've got the legislature statement at the beginning of the open meeting law where these principles are expressly stated. So basically, when there's a multi-member public body, the public just needs to understand how that body is thinking and, and doing things. Unlike just a, an agency with a single head where, you know, we can just ask you questions. What are you doing, single agency head? Here, where there's multi-members, it's a collective decision. So the law just wants, wants the internal thinkings of the body to, to, to be public. So with that, we, we've got a couple of just interpretations here guiding us as to how we interpret the open meeting law. So, um, basically, the law just requires us to err on the side of openness whenever there's a question whether or not something needs to be open. We have that same sort of presumption or interpretation in public records law as well. So again, just, you know, public openness is, is, is the theme here. So who is subject to the open meeting law? As I alluded to, public bodies, so boards and commissions, including any advisory committees of that, that board. So I just gave a training to the professional practices of advisory committee on the same topic. I have a couple hypotheticals from that presentation, which I'll, we'll give in this one as well, since this is an educational body. It's only fitting that we have, you know, some Q and A. So, um, so yeah, essentially, any multi-member public body is, is subject to open meeting law with, with few exceptions that don't apply here. So general requirements from the statute, all meetings of any public body shall be public meetings. All persons so desiring shall be permitted to attend and listen to the deliberations and proceedings. All legal action of public bodies should occur during a public meeting. So in this set of slides, we don't have the definition of legal action, but I just wanted to give that to you from my prior presentation as it kind of helps us keep in mind what sorts of things are subject to open meeting requirements and, and what might not be. So some of you may ask, you know, if I'm telling Executive Director Ross that I have a doctor's appointment and can't make this meeting, is, is that an open meeting violation? Do I need to post that publicly? Well, the answer is, you know, it depends on whether or not what you're talking about is legal action. So legal action, and you don't need to memorize this, but it's a collective decision, commitment or promise made by a public body. So essentially, a group decision made by a public body pursuant to the Constitution, the public body's charter, its bylaws or specified scope of appointment in the laws of this state. So basically, if what you're talking about with the executive director and other board member, whoever, if that's something that falls within the purview of what the public body does in exercising its authority, then you're in the realm of legal action. There's not really a legal action that the public body can take about what you're having for lunch. So those types of conversations, not necessarily, you know, open meeting violations, but I have a couple hypotheticals that we can go through just to kind of hammer down what is and, and, and what is not likely a violation. So. So what is a meeting? So there's a statutory definition for a meeting. So it's a gathering in person or through technological devices. So that can include Zoom, email communications, text. It's just basically the idea that you can all gather together in, in means other than in person, at which a quorum, so that's another important concept to remember, a quorum, which is the majority of the members currently appointed to the public body, at which they discuss, propose, or take legal action, including any deliberations by a quorum with respect to that action. And so it doesn't matter what the label, what label it's placed on there. So here, we're, you know, at a retreat. There's other labels such as study session, meeting, what have you. Anything where there's gonna be discussions, deliberations, proposals regarding legal action has to be done in an open meeting. A meeting includes a one-way electronic communication to or among a quorum of the public body that involves discussion of legal actions. So. Let's see, so what's the next slide? Okay, so, and all right, so I'll go over this slide and then some hypotheticals. So we have this concept called splintering the quorum, as, as the law calls it. And this is where it's not, there isn't exactly a quorum present for a meeting or part of an email communication or a text. It's, so it's less than a majority of members. It can be separate or serial communications between the members. And, but basically, these are not necessarily per se violations of open meeting law. But if the, if there is an intent to engage in that sort of splintering the quorum for the purpose of circumventing the open meeting law, that's a problem. And, and that's gonna be viewed with, with intense scrutiny by an investigative office. So the Attorney General has a section that investigates open meeting, meeting violations. So the Attorney General has a section that investigates open meeting, meeting violations. But for investigations of state bodies, it's usually a county attorney because the Attorney General is recused from investigating, you know, her own clients. So. So there's a couple of things here where the opinions or discussions do not violate meeting law. So the opinion or discussion is not principally directed at or directly given to another member of a public body. So this comes up where say, you know, one of you is, is giving a public statement in an interview or, um, you know, just to your, you know, governing board or to anyone else. That's not going to fall within open meeting law because it's not given to, you know, other members of the board here. And if there's no concerted plan to engage in a collective deliberation to take legal action, that's also not going to fall within it. So. Let's see. All right. So just a couple of hypotheticals. So on my other slides, I have a little pop quiz graphic. So I'm sorry that you don't get to see that. But. So these are tailored to members of P-PAC, but the concepts are equally applicable here. So question one, the Director of Enforcement Actions or for you all, the Executive Director, sends an email to you asking your availability for a training session. Board members respond to Executive Director Ross with their availability. Some hit reply all while others hit only reply to, to Executive Director Ross. Is there an open meeting violation? Dr. Clay.
I really want to put the microphone on.
You're on the record.
It shouldn't be reply all. It should be individual, right?
Yeah. So, so there, there is a best practice that, that we give to, to the executive directors or assistant directors, whatever the, the title is of a board to typically, well, to one, send things via blind copy. So we avoid that risk of hitting reply all. But, but yes, to your point, Dr. Clay, it's best to avoid hitting reply all. So that way we don't create a quorum issue. But here there was a reply all. Someone hit reply all. Sean forgot to send it the correct way. So, you know. So is there an open meeting violation if someone tells the rest of the, the board that they can't make the meeting because their dog's birthday party is that day?
So I'll, I'll say, I say no because it's just the logistics of setting up the meeting not about an action.
No legal action.
No legal action.
But what, but Dr. Clay is right. We should be blind, blind copied so it doesn't happen in the first place.
Because we don't care.
Exactly. And my, my dogs are not under the, the purview of, of the board. Okay. So. Board member Edward Educator is excited for his first day as a board member's first board meeting. During the meeting, Edward Educator sends a text to the Executive Director to ask when lunch is. Is that an open meeting violation? Why or why not? It's, it's a logistical question. It's, it's not about legal action. Though as, as I'll get into later, you know, best practices is, is don't text, you know, about lunch or anything. If you want to know when lunch is, you know, I, I ask, ask in the open meeting that the public also wants to know when lunch is. Okay. So here, so same hypothetical, but instead of texting the Executive Director, Edward Educator sends a text to all of the other board members present at the meeting asking if any of them know when lunch is. This is in a, a group chat. Open meeting violation with this communication? So. Yeah. So it's, it's, it's not necessarily a per se violation of open meeting law. Again, now if lunch is on the menu or on the menu, on the agenda, on the agenda for some type, type of legal deliberation in which we're considering lunch, then, then it, it would be. But in most cases, it's not going to be an open meeting violation because it wasn't a deliberation concerning a legal action. That said, as some of you had alluded to, we, we don't want to do that. We don't want to test the limits of what could be viewed as a legal action or what could be viewed as a discussion or proposal about a legal action. Again, the, the public would also like to know when lunch is. Okay. So this was a, a question that's more specific to, to the P-PAC, but let, let's get your insight on it. So during a P-PAC hearing, a member of the P-PAC Committee sends a text to two other committee members. Keep in mind, the committees are, are, are comprised of nine members in which the member states that the respondent currently before them definitely should have their certificate revoked. Neither of the other members respond. Open meeting violation? So this is where the quorum comes into play. So, so for a nine-member body such as a full P-PAC, the quorum would be, would be five. Here the text was just sent to two members. So while this is something that definitely discusses the legal action that they'd be taking, you know, their recommendation as to disciplined action, it wouldn't be a per se, and I keep using the term per se, open meeting law violation because there's not a quorum there. However, this would likely be viewed as an attempt to circumvent the open meeting laws, whether or not it's just an innocent, you know, I didn't really know the open meeting law because that attorney confused it all for me and I don't know. Or if it was intentional. But either way, you know, just don't text, don't text, just to state, state on the record. And, and because with P-PAC, there's an opportunity for them to say like, yes, I think they should be revoked. So those were just to kind of illustrate what, what you should be thinking about, you know, when faced with, okay, is this okay or not? You know, is this, is this something about a legal action that, you know, we're currently dealing with or that's likely to come before us? Is it sent to a quorum? You know, what is the nature of the communication? All, all of that is relevant. And who is it relevant to? It's relevant to the public, of course. And then for purposes of, you know, the board's legal obligations, it's, it's relevant to, you know, the county attorney who might investigate these violations or alleged violations. And then, and then if it ever goes before a court, it's relevant to the court. But. So yeah. Any questions thus far?
Just real quick. So I report to a five-person. I, I report to a five-person district governing board. And I meet with them regularly. You know, two at a time or individually. What limits are there to say, what do you think about? And just a broad topic.
So if you're meeting with two at a time and three at a time?
No, no, never three at a time. Because it's a five-person board.
So there, there are Attorney General opinions on, on this, this topic of sort of like these, they, they call it, I think, two by two by one meetings or something like that. But the, the, the guidance that the office gives is tread lightly with these because if you're meeting with one group of members, that's fine. As long as it's not a quorum, but you can't then take those, what they're saying and then present it to another pair. Is that?
Yeah, it's not even close to that organized. Just getting, you know, kind of picking their brains about things.
Yeah. So I mean, you, you can pick, you can pick brains.
College related, obviously. It's not random.
Less than a quorum, with less than a quorum. But, you know, you never know if, you know, after you're, you know, your, your brain picking session with the three of you, that the other two aren't going to go, you know, talking to the other two. So it's kind of like, it's, it's, it's like gossip, you know, gossip, oh, don't tell anyone I said this. And the next thing you know, the whole, the whole neighborhood knows or whatever. So communications like that can, you know, permeate through, you know, the board members, through a quorum, and then that's where an open meeting law issue can arise. So, you know, the, the guidance is tread lightly. Yeah. Superintendent Horn.
I, I just have to make my excuse. I have to leave before you're done because of a compelling matter, but I'll catch up with anything I've missed.
I have to do the same. Thank you so much.
We're gonna lose quorum.
You did. No, no, you did. I'll let you talk. Go.
I think, I think you mentioned the public needed to know. So I'm not texting Executive Director Ross to let him know I'm leaving. So thank you.
Has this been off the whole time? I just, I just came back. Oh. Okay. All right. Someone put me on mute then. Okay. So then the other, the other part of open meeting law is giving notice of the meetings. So there's not much utility in giving the public notice of what you're discussing at the meeting if they don't even know that the meeting's taking place. So this, this part mostly applies to board staff, Executive Director Ross, Deputy Director Duplanti, who are preparing the agendas and that sort of thing. But, um, but just for you to know that they do have to give notice, they do have to post the agenda as a matter of law. And I'm not going to go through all of the, the nitty gritty on here, but you, you can read the slides in detail at your leisure because I know that this is definitely content for, for leisure purposes. So the, the, the meeting notice has to be provided at least 24 hours in advance, absent an emergency. With emergencies, a meeting, just the notice required is what's reasonably practicable under those circumstances. And then within 24 hours after the meeting is held, then the agenda, the minutes, all of that has to be posted. Contents of the notice, I, I'm not going to go into detail too much on this, but essentially just identifies who's meeting, the public body it's meeting, date, time and place of the meeting, and the list of the matters to be discussed. So here's where this, you know, comes up in, in play for, for you all. So your discussions and deliberations during a public meeting are confined to the scope of what's disclosed on the agenda. You can, to the extent that something's not disclosed on the agenda, you can always propose that it be put on the agenda for a later meeting, but you can't, can't discuss that at this time. Now, there's a little bit of a, some wiggle room. If you'll see on agenda items, it says the public body may discuss, deliberate, take action only on those matters listed on the agenda and other matters related there too. So there's a little bit of wiggle room. So if you remember a couple of weeks ago, you were, voted to consider a, a, a letter from the legislatures concerning, uh, you know, it, it was the ESA handbook, right? I believe it was. So we didn't put that vote on the agenda. We didn't know that that was going to be a thing. But that was defensible because it related to what you're considering there, whether or not to get input from the legislature, from the legislators to read that letter was something that was related to that agenda item. And the letter was part of the, the record that, you know, part of the minutes. So. So yeah, there, there might be little things like that that come up that would be a, a related there to thing. But, um, you know, the line between, you know, what constitutes something related is, you know, obviously a gray area and will, and will depend on the specific circumstances. Agenda also has to put the time of access. So when the, when members of the public can gather in the meeting room here. Agenda items can be moved. So this is something for the president or the vice president of the board to, to keep in mind. Agenda items can be taken out of order for the board's agendas. There is notice on the agenda itself that items can be taken out of order. That's fine as long as doing so is not, you know, with the specific intent of depriving, you know, the public from listening to something or from offering public comment on it. You know, if we, if we know that there's a bunch of members of the public here for a particular topic and yet we want to move the item to, you know, make them sit longer or something to their disadvantage, that's, that's not going to be okay under the law. Uh, any questions on, on the agenda? Like I said, I'm kind of just brushing through this just to give you the high level points for, for you as board members. But if there's anything on here that catches your eye or you want more information, by all means, let me know. And so with the agenda, the, one thing on here, you know, err on the side of giving the public more information than less. So what, you've seen your agendas, you know, they, they give kind of a general synopsis of the topic, but it's not going to list every little thing that you might propose or every, you know, detail of what's being discussed. But it, there just needs to be enough on there that a member of the public can reasonably know, what are they going to be talking about today? You know, oh, they're going to approve the ESA handbook. They're going to, um, you know, receive information about receiverships or something. You know, that, that, that's clear. So stick to the items on the agenda. There's a little bit of room. If there's something not specifically agendized, if it's related to something else, but use that one with caution. And if I, if, you know, I think if I'm sitting in a meeting, there's something, there's an issue, then, you know, I'll nudge Executive Director Ross and we'll, we'll clarify it. Executive sessions. So this was, um, this was a hot topic this year. So executive sessions are authorized for certain purposes that are set forth in statute. So the, the gist of it is, um, you know, there's a number of exceptions there and in the statute, but most commonly executive sessions are used for the purpose of, of you, the board, meeting with your legal counsel to get legal advice in connection with something that's on the agenda. So that's, that's kind of the main point here is that the topic that you're meeting in legal, in executive session for has to be disclosed on the agenda. The fact that you might go into an executive session is not necessarily required when it's for legal advice because you, you never know what you might need legal advice on. You know, the ESA handbook might be on the agenda, but someone might say, hey, can we get a, a legal opinion on this before we take action? But the agenda will, should have and does have, you know, a general statement at the beginning that the board can meet in legal, in executive session to get legal advice on any of these. Now, for some of these more specific exceptions, like to discuss personnel matters where like a school district governing board, they're often talking about dismissal of an employee. The, those types of more specialized, specific executive sessions generally have to be noticed. Um, and then just as a best practice, if, you know, Executive Director Ross or board leadership anticipates that there will be an executive session, then it doesn't hurt to include that on the agenda. But for, for legal advice executive sessions, it's sufficient to put it at, at the beginning there. For going into executive session, here's something that, that you all should pay attention to. So when moving to go into executive session, there's not specific statutory language that's required. The statute doesn't say, a board member must say the following words. But the best practice is, is to say, you know, I, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of, and then just give a general, you know, reason as to why you want to go. And you don't need to, you know, regurgitate the specific statute, statutory citation that allows for it. Like you don't need to memorize which statute says you can go into executive session for legal advice, but just make clear on the record, you know, I move we go into executive session for legal advice on, you know, on agenda item, whatever we're at. And again, it's not required that you do that, but the more that you can put into the record with, without sacrificing, of course, you know, attorney client privilege information, the better. So, you know, whenever there's someone, you know, looking at it, again, member of the public and investigatory body, then we can clearly say, well, you know, this is, this was the purpose here. This is why we went in. And, and, and those types of investigations, they'll look at the totality of the meeting as well. But the more that we can tighten things up where we can, just in a simple motion, all the better. Any questions on that point? All right. So I already talked about that. That's the thing. I go off script a lot, so it's hard for me to see what the script says. Okay. And yeah, so here's just an example of what the agenda would, would look like. I don't, I don't need to belabor this right now. So, yeah, general tidbits. If you're unsure whether a matter requires an executive session, ask. And then once we're in executive session, then it's, it's sort of like another meeting is taking place. So we'll do an attendance of who's there, minutes will be taken separate from the minutes of the open session. And then critically, the, the, the most important thing to know with executive sessions is you can't take legal action during the executive session, nor can you discuss what legal action you want to take. So some of you have, have been through an executive session and for newer members. Actually, no, I think this, this whole board did. So, but, you know, the, the, the general rule is just, you know, anything where you're talking about what you want to do after receiving legal advice has to be an open session. The executive session for legal guidance, that's just, you know, guidance on the law, how the law might apply to the facts, that sort of thing. But once you have, you know, your questions answered as to how the law will apply and now you're deciding what do I want to do with that, that goes into open session. And and so that that's kind of the main. Takeaway from executive session versus open session is that the executive session, you're confined to what. The statutes say you can do in that executive session, but any legal action. Any discussion of legal action, anything like that has to be an open session. Now, the one thing where there can be. Kind of a hybrid of that is where it's an executive session for the purpose of advising your counsel, what position to take in a settlement, which itself is a a separate. Exception to um. Open session. Then the the action in the public session can just simply be, we move to. You know, approve the our attorney to take action as directed in the executive session. So. Uh, you know, and and the guidance from the attorney general's office and the case law on that as to what. What amount of information you need to have in the open session as to what the attorney is going to do is just going to vary case by case. I mean. You know, if it's a settlement offer to another party, you know, the advice can be. We we I move to have our attorney, you know, proceed as directed and make a settlement offer to the other side. But as to the specifics of what that offer might entail, that doesn't necessarily have to be given. But, you know, if if we ever have questions on that, we we can address them at that time. Any questions on executive sessions? You don't have to be an executive to be in the session. We can bring an intern, but they're bound by confidentiality. So. Um, and that's the other thing too. So another key point is that um there has to be an admonition given. During the executive session as to the confidentiality of it. So all of us or all of who may be in the executive session. Can't speak about anything in the in the executive session um outside of it. So now that is not a quorum dependent issue or a legal action issue. You can't tell anyone regardless of a quorum or not a quorum. So. You take whatever's discussed there to your grave. Or to a county attorney that might investigate, but. Yeah. Um, let's see, what else do we have?
Joe, I know um coming up next is call to the public. We had a good discussion about that this morning already. Uh, the board adopted a new policy, so we could probably go through call to the public pretty quickly and. And maybe get to the the next part.
Okay, I'll I'll just really quick just say there's. No statutory right for public participation. It's within the discretion of the public body to whether or not they want to allow a public comment. And then as to what the form is. And then the only other thing there is that the the public body can put time, manner and place restrictions. That apply uniformly to all members of the public that aren't, you know, content specific. So I'll just add that. Is that that good?
Yeah, thanks, Joe. Perfect. We actually, I think I said time, manner and place at least four times this morning. So that was good, good reminder.
Okay, okay. Uh, all right. So, um, and then and then did you go over responding to a call to the public? Okay, so so for calls to the public, um. So individual board members are not, well, the the board itself cannot respond to to public comment. At the conclusion of the public comments, so at the conclusion of that agenda item, individual board members can respond to criticism. Now. That is, that is one permissible response to the public comment. Now that one tread lightly with that one because you don't want to. You know, commence a sparring match between a member of the public, you know, it's advisable to to not respond unless. Unless you feel feel so compelled to do so. If a member of the public doesn't necessarily have to speak on anything that's on the agenda, so they can speak on anything within the board's um jurisdiction. So. For example, at this last meeting, we had a number of people speaking on. You know, special education and early graduation. So we didn't really have. An agenda items specifically on that topic, but it is an issue that, you know, would be within the per board's purview to, you know, act on, you know, by. Maybe modifying some of its rules or otherwise. So. That's just to say that they they can speak on anything within your jurisdiction. It doesn't have to be anything on the agenda for that day. Now, if a board member wants to. You know, consider taking action on something that was proposed by a member of the public, then the process is just to propose. To board staff that that be placed on a future agenda. And. Yeah. Any questions on? That. Yes.
I know um in every meeting, it's in the standard comments when we go into public comment to remind the public that we can't respond. Think sometimes, especially when we have lengthier sessions, it's really good to remind people. Also, because and let them know that the law says that. In other words, it's not like a choice we've made to just we're taking a pile. I think it they think to the outside, we've all been through this a million times. They don't really understand that. Maybe even modifying our comments that ARS, you know, Arizona state law prohibits us from responding. And even reminding it during the end and please don't mistake the fact that we're not saying anything is that we don't care because. This is the first time you've ever been to a public meeting. It's a it's a lot. It's overwhelming. Took a lot of courage for them to come down. They may have had to sit and wait for a long time. So I think it's worth continuing to remind them, don't take it personally.
Yeah, and and may maybe including the the reference to the statute, just to make clear that this this isn't us just wanting to say like, no, we don't.
We're happy you here, but yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else on? Public comment. Um, so one thing, did you go over um with like the P pack recommendations?
We did. Yeah, we covered that in the.
Okay. Okay. All right, let's see. Okay, so here's the fun stuff. So if there are violations of open meeting law, there are penalties that come with that. And they basically range from, you know, just kind of like a letter of censure type thing of, you know, like shame on you, do better next time. Um, to, you know, removal from from your office as a board member if if it was a particularly egregious, willful type of violation. But most most issues that arise are are benign are just. You know, like. You know, just kind of like, oh, you know, I didn't realize that or something, you know, they're they're usually benign. And and those those types of, you know, mistakes aren't going to be, you know. Really something that that gets gets the board in trouble. We do get guidance from, you know, county attorney's offices as to, you know, best practices and stuff, and so we implement that. Um, and then we move on. But just so you know, there there are some some harsh penalties where there was. Willful conduct, where there was an attempt to, you know, skirt the open meeting law. You know, but. Yeah, so just be just be aware of that. And then, so yeah, just additional points to remember. It all it all goes back to the public. They have a right to listen and participate and to attend. They don't have a right to offer their own input. That's at the discretion of the public body. Be be mindful of of, I like on the slide, communications and things you write down during a meeting, texts during a meeting. You know, because a a part of open meeting law or a close cousin of it is public records law. And so things. Might be a public record. Even if they're on a personal device, to the extent that they relate to board business. So. You know, just be mindful of what you're putting in in emails and text messages. Um, as that, you know, can can constitute um a public record that, you know, i- is subject to disclosure. And then if if the board would like, I I'm happy to do at some point a public records presentation, but I just just throw that out here too, just because it's related to some of these points. I think that's the. Oh, yeah, so. Yeah, so a couple of resources that are kind of more user friendly than just looking at the statutes themselves. The Embudsman Citizens Aid Office has some good stuff. My office has their handbook, which has some stuff in a digestible format. And yes, thank you for your time and attention. Any final questions on on any of this?
I wanted to know what time lunch was, but I texted Sean during.
We'll look forward in the minutes. All right. Well, thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to item seven, uh, executive director Ross.
Uh, members of the board, uh, uh, Vice President Hagerman, uh, well, Speaker of the Board, thank you so much for a wonderful meeting and retreat. Uh, it was very informative. Thank you to everybody who made time to come and present. Um, I'm especially proud of this meeting and retreat pairing because it hit every single thing the board does. And especially highlights the great work of of our staff. So we had Shannon talking about students of the month. We had some ESA items that Kat and Lucinda cover. Uh, we had some issues of policy for Rico. Melissa is the heart of the budget work that happens at this agency. Jessica presented some data. Um, our enforcement action team talked about a discipline. That includes all of our investigators. So we have Garnett and Dave and all of the great work that their team teams do. Uh, and then obviously none of this work happens without uh Bruce. And so uh I'm just very, very proud of this team. They're an incredible staff. They do incredible work, and I think it was really highlighted in these last two days. Thank you all for your dedication. I know it's a lot of information, but uh. It's it's important and the work you do is is so vital. And most importantly, lunch is next. Thanks though.
All right, so we adjourn at twelve forty five.